I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, May 21st, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Tensing, and Paula Cole. I am Chair Christine Malik. We also have Superintendent Unowski. I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. We will start with review and approval of the agenda if someone is prepared to make a motion.
I approve the agenda.
Second?
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda passes. So we will move on to, starting with public comment. Individuals who wish to address the board during a board meeting may do so during the public comment portion of the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. To participate in public comments, individuals must make a written request to the board secretary up to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting or on the paper sign-up out front up until 1 minute before the start of the meeting. This grant speaker has the opportunity to make a presentation up to 3 minutes. And our board secretary will indicate when 30 seconds are left and when time is up. And she's sitting there, so when you speak, you'll be up here. The board asks that each speaker who has signed up state their name and address for the record. Speakers are asked to refrain from using this form to criticize, complain, or make allegations about specific employees by name due to privacy and legal concerns. The board takes into consideration comments made, but is not holding a two-way dialogue or an interactive discussion during public comments. They are designed for us to listen to you and, if needed, provide a district response at a later time. Questions and concerns and requests may then be directed to appropriate administrators for review. Any speaker who requires a written response to a specific question may also request that. If you were unable to make a request in advance of tonight's meetings, we have two ways for you to share your thoughts. You can alternatively complete a board comment sheet. Those are out front, where you can write down your thoughts and give them to us this evening, and we will review your comments before our next meeting. The other is for you to request to participate in comment for a future board meeting. So thank you for your attention and respect for this process. And we will start with Mark Cameron, who has already found his way to the podium. Thank you. Welcome.
I catch on fast. My name is Mark Cameron, 7627 Upton Avenue, South. And I am so thankful for the opportunity to address you this evening. Thank you. Thank you very much. I have been praying about something for the last 11 years, since they closed the RIS swimming pool. And tonight, I would like to propose two things. Number one, please reopen the STEM swimming pool. Right now, the cost estimate is at $4.5 million. But did you know that the father organization of swimming in the nation is called United States Swimming? And in 2010, I asked them to send their pool renovation expert here. John McIlargie and I met at the RIS pool, and his guesstimate in $20.10 for the restoration of that pool was $1 million. Now, that was $20.10. But there's a lot that can be done in terms of different ideas in terms of that renovation. So we don't necessarily need to be spending that much. I'm asking you guys, please, to slow down in terms of what you're going to do with this pool. It takes a lot of time to raise $4.5 million, but it can be done. Point in case, in the early '70s, then superintendent Carlton Lytle decided that he wanted to have water in the Richfield Public Schools. And in 1976, the two pools were built. Example, the Phillips neighborhood decided that they wanted to renovate a pool and had just recently opened it up at the cost of $3 million. However, they added $4 million to that renovation so that they could put in a new four-lane pool. Why? So they could have warm water for lessons. And if we were able to do this renovation, we could do warm water for lessons, which would greatly help our community education program. I see Carol's head nodding over there. So, please, consider that. Second consideration is I'd like to have the board consider a change or an addition to our curriculum. The curriculum that I'm proposing is a 3rd, 4th, 5th grade swimming instruction curriculum. Now, this would be, okay, I'm a 3rd grader at Centennial. I wish you fits. And I, for two weeks, catch the bus, suit and towel in hand. And I am taken to the pool, and I get my swimming lesson for 30 minutes. I catch the bus, and I go back. This would do a world of good for Richfield Schools. It would help us to sell our program in a highly competitive district-to-district situation. And it would make sure that all of our kids, grade 3, 4, and 5, learn how to swim in the land of 10,000 lakes. Time's up.
Thank you. And so next, we have Kanani Ali.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Kanani Ali, 7420 Russell Avenue, South. And as a continuation of Mr. Cameron's speech, before joining the swim team, I had no idea how to swim, and I was actually really, really afraid of getting into the water. I had had an accident at Lake Area where I was stuck underneath the, like, the block. And thankfully, one of my friends came out and got me. But ever since then, I was really afraid of even, like, getting near the water. When I joined the team, it was because my friends had joined, and I wanted to take charge of something that I could change. And joining the team was probably, like, one of the best things that had ever happened to me because now I'm confident in my ability to swim, and I'm confident in my ability to save other people. I do swim lessons so that I can teach other kids how to do it as well. But I know that the majority of minorities in, like, the middle school and elementary schools don't know how to swim, and that makes them more at risk for drowning. And I feel like this would, by having the pool at a younger age, that would teach them how to be confident in their abilities, like I am. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing your experience. So next, we have Tina Lavin.
I'm Tina Lavin. I live at 7024 Knox Avenue, South. Thank you for allowing me to come here and speak about an opportunity that's before us with the review of the policy on the community use of schools. I'm a parent of three children who are part of multiple sports during the school year and also the summer. The performance of the school district's athletic office has direct impacts on my family and so many others in this community. The way that this policy review was communicated is a direct example of the issues that the youth organizations face when trying to work with the athletic office. In general, there's been a consistent lack of communication along with errors in scheduling and billing for many youth organizations. I believe that this policy review is an opportunity to resolve these issues for a better partnership between the school district and the community youth organizations. I would like to ask for a task force to be created, which would have one representative from each of the community youth organizations and the school district, which should include the athletic office and a school board member. I think it's very important for the school district to hear what's been working and what also needs to be improved from the viewpoints of the youth organizations. Richfield is ripe with so much opportunity. However, we continually lose student athletes to other school districts. A small group of parents with ties to various sports in the community were able to identify 22 families representing over 47 kids whom we've played summer sports or school sports with, who no longer attend RPS, where we know that athletics was at least one part of their decision to leave the district. This number exceeds the fund balance that was set aside to cover an unexpected drop of 40 in the enrollment. So if we look at the numbers from this perspective, it clearly highlights the importance that athletics and activities play in any school district. This issue is too big to be dealt with by an email or by speaking at a board meeting. The parents and the community members on youth organization boards have all chosen to stay and help build the district and deserve an opportunity to better partner with the athletic office, including this policy revision. Having a rental policy that supports community organizations is a great way to help improve our district's retention rate. Further, developing a strong and productive link between the athletic office and the youth organizations will better instill a sense of school spirit and stronger athletic performance, which ultimately can help grow enrollment. It's about having pride in your community and building programs for the kids of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we have Warren Pyle.
Good evening. My name is Warren Pyle, 7521 Clinton Avenue. I'd like to thank the school board for allowing me 3 minutes of your time to present this. I represent the newly-formed Save the STEM School Pool Action Committee. This newly-formed action committee is a cooperative effort, starting with three organizations: the Richfield High School Girls Swim Team Parent Boosters, the Richfield High School Boys Swim Team Parent Boosters, and the Richfield Swim Club, also known as the Piranhas. I've also been in contact with the Director of Richfield Community Education, and they are aware of the situation tonight. For many parents, we were very surprised to hear about the existence of a swimming pool located in the STEM school. We were shocked that a community asset was allowed to sit dormant for 11 years. Why was the STEM school pool left off the recent capital improvement bond referendum? I know the current district administration has a back-to-basics agenda. Reading, writing, and arithmetic are basic skills that every student must have. But those skills could be lost in a water accident if they don't know how to swim. Swimming is a basic human skill. We live in the land of 10,000 lakes, waiting to learn how to swim until the 6th grade is extremely late. However, I found out that when the skim school pool was open, the district did have a grade 3 through 5 swimming curriculum. I recently attended the grand reopening of the Phillips Community Pool, Minneapolis. Through visiting with staff, it was widely advertised that 90% of the water fatalities in Minnesota are children. Currently, in Richfield, pool space is at a premium. Beginning swimming lessons through community ed are extremely limited. Open public swimming is offered only 2 and 1/2 months out of the year. The high school swim team has limited practice time. The Richfield Swim Club has to rent space outside of Richfield. And Richfield adults are greatly underserved by only one public education water class. We can do better, and we must do better. Save the STEM School Pool Action Committee stands ready to help raise funds to rehabilitate and reopen the STEM school pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you all for speaking this evening. We will move to reports and information from school sources and the superintendent update.
All right, so we have a relatively long agenda. I'm going to bring Dr. Will Hyte up to the microphone. One of the things the board had requested was an update on ARCEP. Just as a reminder, ARCEP is our Richfield College Experience Program. It is located at Normandale Community College. It takes our ALC students and allows them to complete their high school education at the same time gaining classes and gaining credits for college. And so with that, and our update, Dr. Will Hyte.
Hi. Good evening. It's nice to be here again with you all. I feel like I was just here. So a little update about the Richfield College Experience Program. So I wanted to start with some of the demographics and kind of our numbers. So right now, we have 56 enrolled students. 33 are RPS students, and 23 are open enrollees. Surprisingly enough, we have about an even split between our male and female students at 28 and 28. And then you can see we have 1 9th grader, 4 10th graders, 18, 11th graders, and 33 12th graders. And then also, it's a fairly diverse population, which I love. In terms of graduates this year, we're expecting between 13 and 15 students to graduate. So right now, we are on the Normandale schedule, so that means last Friday was the students' last day. Graduation is June 8th. So right now, we have this kind of gap time. So students are still able to kind of finish up those last couple course credits or a couple units in a class. So we always kind of wait right to the end to see, are they able to get that done so that they can walk across the stage? But currently, right now, we're aiming for this number. I believe 2 to 4 of those students actually finished up with us around semester time, so around December. Of these students, about 5 of them took mostly Normandale classes and saw pretty good success. They were in things like jazz. So we have someone in jazz ensemble, fitness for life. Someone was in a creative writing course. And then there are about another 6 students who took at least 1 Normandale class, if not more. Some strengths that we have from being on the Normandale campus. So students experience a college campus, which is great. Some of the students maybe would not otherwise see themselves as doing something after their high school experience. So this gives them a great opportunity to be on a campus, see the services, be with college students. Another strength is that they are encouraged to take college classes by our Normandale liaisons. So they might always hear that message from their teachers, you know, at RHS or from the ARCEP teachers, but it's really good when they hear the same message being given to them from Normandale folks. There are partnerships with the college which can support students. So if they're enrolled in a Normandale class, they can take advantage of, like, the advising center. They can take advantage of student tutors and mentors. And then they have all access to other things that are on Normandale's campus. And then also, they get the college credit for the dual enrollment between the high school and college. Some of the challenges that we experience out there, challenge and a strength, but they're on a college campus. So there are many things that can be a little bit distracting, especially traveling from one part of the building clear across campus to another part. There are just so many more things to see and do, and it's an open campus also. So when we're in a closed environment, like at the high school, it's easier to restrict sometimes where students go, staying in buildings. We have, I don't know how many exits and doors on the Normandale campus. It's nice out there. There's the Japanese gardens that sometimes students may take a detour into. And then there are all the activities that take place on a Normandale campus, student groups, and so there are just more things to stop and talk to more students, which is great. But it also can sometimes be a distraction for them. Students are anxious or fearful about college courses. We see that quite a bit. We encourage them to take a college course. And many of the students will say, yeah, maybe not right now. So we're trying to think about how to get them more comfortable and sort of do a, just kind of get their toe in the water, and then their foot, and then their knee, and then in a full release. If they are not in a college course, then those college supports are not accessible to us. So it's trying to make sure that we bridge and partner a little differently moving forward. And then also, students may struggle in both courses. So if they're struggling with our ARCEP courses, and then they're also in a Normandale course, if they struggle there, that can be a little bit tricky for them. So we're trying to think through some of those pieces. Other small things that create, I think they're just little bumps in the road, but things that you would smooth out in any program in a year or two, things like space. Normandale is a community college. They have office spaces set up. They have timeframes for when you can be in classrooms. So that runs all a little bit differently for, like, an otherwise alternative high school program. And then there's some paperwork pieces that we're learning, and our timing on those just needs to get a little tighter. And then moving forward into next school year, we're talking about hours of operation and how to become really a true credit recovery and flexible scheduling kind of site for students. We're partnering a lot with MDE to see what are some of the best programs out there and what can we model after. Thinking about some summer options for our students that are housed through us out at ARCEP, fluid schedule like hybrid offerings, project-based learning, standards-based grading, those kind of pieces. More student choices built in, so really sitting down with students and having them do their comprehensive learning plan and having them have some voice and choice over how they want to attack some of those course credits and credit recovery pieces. And then some of the training that we're moving forward with, actually, probably in the next 3 weeks, the Adverse Childhood Experiences Training, or ACEs Training. We're going to be doing the Innocent Classroom work. And then also, we have MDE coming out with us about 2 weeks to kind of talk us through, again, some of the best pieces about alternative programming and what we can add to our program. Do you have any questions?
I have a few, if that's all right. The, so what is a typical course load that the students would take? And then how many of them are, you know, is there a, do we work, counsel them towards everything they take is towards the pathway towards graduation?
Yes.
Or are they allowed free rein, which is also okay?
No. So ideally, they come in, we look at the transcript, we looked at what credits they need future-wise. So if I come in as a junior, here's what you need as a senior. Here's also what maybe you did not get your credits for in your sophomore year or in your earlier part of your junior year. And then they're put into those courses.
When you speak of juniors and sophomores, is that, are those groupings done by credit basis or roughly by age level? Or are they still tightly packed in that?
So...
Right. So is the typical junior someone who's 16 or 17 years old?
So right now, the state is looking at what is your cohort year. So that's how the state looks at it. So even though you may be like a 5th-year senior with us, your cohort year is actually from the previous.
Okay. And one other thing, one of the things you mentioned about one of the challenges was students fearful of college courses or the more rigorous courses. You know, at RHS this year with the 7-period day, we have touted pretty heavily the idea that we get, that we offer supports for students and to chance to embrace the risk they're taking by having support courses to give them a little bit of a boost or a little extra time to be ready for courses that aren't within their comfort zone. Do we not offer the same?
So that was one of our discussions moving forward, is how do we build and support courses into our schedule? So, and I will say, in terms of if a student is in a Normandale course, it's a little tricky for the ARCEP teachers to build in the support because you have a professor teaching, I don't know, I don't know what someone would do, a creative writing course, which may or may not really look like an ELA 11 class or writing class. And there isn't, we aren't at the point yet where that professor and our teacher are really sitting down and having a tightly-aligned discussion. It would be great to get there one day. We're not there yet.
All right. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions as well. Thanks for the update. It was really helpful just to get a sense of where things are in our second year of this program. My first question is, what do you make of the discrepancy between our ideal size of the program and the actual size? Because right now, I think we're about 4 students under the lower level of that ideal size range. So I'm curious to hear your thoughts on that and just marketing efforts that you plan and your team plan to do leading up to the next school year.
So I'm going to start with the marketing piece. So we're coming up to the end of year 2, and truly, this is, I think, my 4th month. So we've talked about how can we market this better? What are we doing really well? Where are students seeing success? And trying to think about, it would be, we've tossed around the ideas of what, like, fairs can we go to? Or how can we get our name out there? How can we share with our other alternative programs like Choice, like Gateway? Because we do have kids coming from St. Paul or from Bloomington or Egan. And we do share alternative program to alternative program. We do have kids that go back and forth. Branding and some of those pieces, I think, are still in development. Right now, I would say many of our open-enroll students are, it's through word of mouth. They've been at, through a couple different schools. They meet some students that that school doesn't work. They find themselves at ARCEP, and they tell their friends that we're at that last high school. I don't want to name any high schools, just to call them out. But, yeah, we have probably, I'd say, maybe 6 to 8 kids right now that are probably heard through word of mouth, a friend of a friend who was with us. Discrepancy with the numbers, it's, I will say, I think that's a little tricky. Some of the students come, and they find that it may not be for them, and they stop coming. We try really hard to reach out to them and to encourage them to continue to come. I think that's also another place where we can tighten up and get better at reaching out to students who may be choosing other pathways. Like a student said the other day, hey, my friend goes to XYZ place, and she's doing all of her work online. I would like to do all my work online. So it's also, I think, listening to students to say what best motivates them or how would they also like to learn? And then is that a way we can offer some of our courses?
And I have one other question, which, you know, seeing the number of seniors, quote-unquote seniors, which I think was 33, and then the anticipated graduation rate, which I think was 13 to 15. So obviously, that's lower than I would say all of us would want it to be. And I know that alternative learning centers tend to have lower graduation rates, at least at that 4-year level. So I don't know if there's more that you would want to say to sort of add context to why that rate is what it is.
Well, I would say this morning, in fact, at 4:30 AM, I was online checking Choice and Gordon Parks and some of the other alternative sites because I was curious to see what is their graduation rate. A lot of them are kind of hanging tight around 50, somewhere between like 50 and 56%. We need to get to that point. Their programs are quite a bit larger as well, 100 and some students to 100 and some students. When you look at their amount of staff, staffing and services, support services around some pieces, those are larger also. In addition to, I think there are things that we can do in our program just differently, hence the partnering with the state to say, what are the best alternative programs doing, and how do we replicate them here? Because we can always improve.
Thank you.
One clarification, one question. So just as a reminder, so last year, we were in the mid-40s for enrollment at ARCEP. Now, we're in the mid-to-high 50s. And so it looks like we are doing that slow growth we had talked about. And then a question for you, Dr. Will Hyte. 33 seniors, is that all first-year seniors? Or is that seniors who are 18, 19, 20, who have been there for a period of time?
It's a little bit of a mix right now.
All right. So we'll continue on. Superintendent update, just as a reminder. None of these things that we presented in the update.
Do you want to, so Pete had a suggestion.
Yes.
Since we have a lot of people here who brought this information about the pool, and that's way far down on our very long agenda tonight. Perhaps we could just tell them that as part of the process, there isn't going to be a decision made tonight, but it will be, there'll be a presentation. So we could bump that up on the agenda so that they could see it, and then we could follow up with them at a later date. Is that, is that what you were getting at?
Essentially, yes. I was getting at, I was seeing a few people who might get tired standing in the back.
There's 3 chairs here, too.
Yeah. I was thinking, I was thinking we could perhaps, whether we shift it to that item of the, part of the agenda or we could move AD, as far as suggested future agenda items, we could split, I'm sorry, Section 70, which would be suggested future agenda items, and do a portion of that now and do a portion of that at the end as a means of just sort of facilitating communication with the group who are present. But I mean, I would, obviously, we would need a, I would need a second on that motion to amend the agenda.
I will, I may want one second then.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead to amend the agenda to move up the future agenda items. Or to... And...
Or the facility study.
Yeah, the facility study.
Well, we could, I think probably moving forward the facility study would, does make the most sense.
Right.
It would allow, it would allow our facility study to go ahead and present, and it would allow board members to ask questions, and then perhaps we could also determine what our course of action is. I mean, again, I'm just suggesting this shift in the agenda, so.
I think we're within the superintendent update section already, so unless there would be negative impacts for switching five to number two, I don't really see a downside to doing that.
Okay.
The only request that I make is we actually move it up to four, since I have probably 20 people here, I'd love them to hear in what will only take three to four minutes, the STEM grant update and the voluntary pre-K, which are some exciting things for our school, and as a superintendent who would love to share that with people, I'd love for them to hang in with me five minutes and give me patience, if you guys are all...
Fair enough.
That is acceptable.
That is the motion as amended?
So just to be clear, you're asking to move?
I know, you want to be clear.
Peer review update.
Now I don't know what we switched to, four and five.
Four and five, we have a super.
All right. Yes.
John, that's what you seconded? I seconded.
All right, so again, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we will amend the agenda.
All right, well, thank you all for indulging me. A couple of quick things, all right, STEM grant update. We were excited to receive about $94,000 from the state of Minnesota. As this board has talked about, they want us, you all want us pursuing innovative opportunities to serve all of our students. State granted us $94,000 to fund additional and expanded courses for underserved and low-income students, but actually will serve all of our students and creating new classes at our high school that are AP and college in the schools and provide credit opportunities for college and for high school. And so we're excited to receive, it'd be one of the small group of projects funded by the state of Minnesota, $94,000 to serve our students with expanded STEM coursework at our high school. So it was exciting, and I wanted to share that tonight. We also received additional funding for our voluntary pre-K program. So as a reminder, we have about 180 students in our early childhood education program, and as this board has created a vision around serving all Richfield students at the earliest age possible. We expanded with our Pathway II Scholarship Program several years back. When the governor funded voluntary pre-K, we were one of the first districts at the table, and have gone into this year with 180 seats. We received funding for 40 more seats, including 20 full-day spots at our Richfield Dual Language School to expand their full-day program to 40, and an additional 20 half-day seats at Centennial, making our pre-K program up to approximately 220 students. Central, I'm sorry, thank you. So 220 students, and almost getting to full capacity of all of our Richfield kids with early childhood education. So we're excited to share that information with you as the board and also the public. Are there any questions about items two and three? Wonderful, and thank you for indulging me.
Thank you.
We're going to turn things over to Mr. Craig Holgie and our referendum project, facility study update.
Yeah, thank you very much. In November of 2017, the community of Richfield stepped forward with some strong support for our community and our facility upgrades specifically. There's been a lot of work that's been taking place since then. We jumped in immediately with some of the planning work. Earlier this year, earlier this, in January, February, we had approved ICS and WOL as our partners moving this project forward. They have been actively engaged in planning around four of our specific buildings, and as we promised to come forward and share this information with the board, as well share this information with the community on a regular basis. They're here giving us an update on kind of the status of where we are at so far and where we plan to be moving forward at this time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andy and Vaughn and the team here, and Ryan and the whole crew that's working on this, so.
There are seven chairs in the front.
Why doesn't anybody want to come sit with us?
Well, I'll keep this quick, I know there's probably other things that are in this presentation we'll talk about, but as Craig mentioned, right now we're in the design phase still, just going for quite a bit yet here, but we'll have more updates for you in the future, probably more regularly actually, as things get going along. Core planning groups and user groups, that's more of an architectural design element, which the architects will talk about, and we'll talk about here in a second, and we'll get to that, but those are progressing nicely, some are actually complete at this point. We are starting initial meetings with the city to talk about what the improvements that we're putting in, how that's affecting them, pros, cons, all those good things, no official reviews yet at this time, but we're starting those initial talks. Project oversight committee, as Craig mentioned, we are meeting regularly every other week to talk about issues, you know, schedules, all that good stuff. Again, no real fire danger at that at this point, it's pretty early in the process, so we'll just keep those going and monitor that throughout. And some miscellaneous projects have started, we are getting proposals in for survey work and for environmental facility assessments and things like that that pertain to our projects, to get them underway and scheduled, even some miscellaneous deferred maintenance projects throughout the district that have started at this point, and we'll, you know, full summer. So those are kind of design phase activities that are happening right now, and we'll get a little bit more into the detail of those.
And just as a quick update reminder, so on our homepage, richfieldschools.org, there is a tab at the bottom, capital facilities updates, and so there is a posted weekly update on the work that's happening, and also weekly notes in regard to the meetings that are occurring with the core planning groups at each site, and also the work that the oversight committee is doing.
Thank you. And so a big part of the projects are the LTFM project, which is long-term facility maintenance. So we're working through a lot of that stuff with the onsite investigations as far as the existing mechanical equipment, what can be reused, size of existing things to make sure the new pieces fit. Plumbing, we're working on verifying existing plumbing lines, make sure there's no holes in existing domestic water piping or sanitary sewer lines. Electrical, again, size of electrical equipment, panels in association with the new proposed equipment, and then the interior finishes. The facilities team has replaced floors throughout the district on a yearly basis, so we want to make sure that we recognize those pieces and we're not going in and replacing a floor that had been replaced a year ago. And also some of the exterior conditions as far as tuck pointing and roofing and anything else on the outside of the building, site work in general, parking lot replacement. Some of the current projects we've put on the forefront for the LTFM projects are the Sheridan chimney. We removed a portion of the Sheridan chimney, which was, it was cracked and it was failing, and so we got some contractors out there to give us a proposal and took care of that. We've got the pool cleaning at the middle school, we issued a request for proposals to clean that pool, we worked with the pool people and community ed to make sure that we had a timeframe that works, and we've got that scheduled to be completed in August. And then we're also working with Dan on some exterior door replacements that are going to be outside of the scope of the projects, make sure, you know, there's some exterior doors that need to be replaced now that we can make sure we get those done, and they're not going to be affecting the future, as in, we're not going to come in with the bigger project, we'll call it, and say, oh, well, we just replaced this door, and now we're going to tack an addition on here, you know, for the secure entry, for example. And then also any other miscellaneous high priority items that we're identifying on a bi-weekly basis of the project doors and... And I'll turn over to Vaughn and Mike to go into the core wing.
Yeah, first we want to talk about the central education center, and as Andy said, a big part of our work with our architectural teams is really kind of two phases. One is literally sending teams through the buildings and looking for all these LTFM things, and so making sure that those decisions are the right ones, and then refining all the things that really need to be replaced, which is huge basis for the whole referendum. Second part is a little bit more of a programmatic thing. Here we are, we took a look at, again, the general use of the building, we met with, we met with the leaders of this building and kind of walked through the building, met with facilities as well, to try to understand how they're using the building now, what spaces are being used, maybe just because they're available, and really try to understand how that all works. Second part of this is secure entry options. During the pre-referendum diagrams, we had looked at the entry option as being up on that northwest corner. Since that time, we've kind of, we're starting to look at, maybe switching it back to where the original office was. A couple reasons. First of all, I don't know what everybody thinks, but I've always had a hard time picturing the main entry of that building being up in that corner. If you look at it, there's not a whole lot to look at. And so what we started thinking about is if we move it down to the southwest corner, we can keep things that are really currently there, possibly redesign the office to make it more functional for the community education aspect of it, and also for bringing in people. They have a lot of people coming in there for various programs, signing up, that kind of thing. The one thing that we're a little deficient on, though, is parking along that side. That's the part that makes that a hard sell. Probably when it was first built, people walking in wasn't a good deal. So we have had a couple of preliminary meetings with the city, met with the city planning to see what it would take if we were to put some parking down at that end and create that more of a, as a visitor slash community education type of lot, would that work? Preliminary indication is, it's something that we think we could do. And so the other aspect of this is what does this building, how's this building different than, say, your other schools? The other schools, you're creating a secure entry that really, after the initial students coming in the morning, you close everything off and everybody has to get robbing through the office. This building has so many people going in and out at all times of the day that we, that I think, and again, in talking to staff, it'd be really hard to force everybody to go in there. So we really looked at this building as two things, we kind of have a public on that south wing, a public community ed space, and then the north-south as more of this public zone. And then we'd be able to lock off the three other wings that have your head start, and your early childhood, and other things like that. So that's what we're looking at. The other aspect of doing what we're doing here and possibly doing the office renovation on the southwest corner is any future occupancy considerations. Again, if this, for instance, went to an all early childhood center, then it could be treated much like a normal elementary school and have that safe, so that we wouldn't have to change anything. So that's kind of where we're at. So we think this option is probably the least impact to the building, we can still do all the things we're looking at.
At RDLS, so RDLS, our STEM and high school, we have larger core planning groups as part of the schematic design process, and they're made up of staff, community members, we have some high school students on the high school group, and their job really is to help us with criteria and putting the right pieces in the right place before we get to the next level, which would be more specific user groups. And so we're complete with the core planning process on both RDLS and our STEM at this point. At RDLS, part of the process, well, for all of them, was we want to tour, so we'll look at different items. And our biggest issues there were how do we create the secure vestibule for the building, what's the first ID you see coming in, and so as part of their process, the media center will be right at the front door to come into the building. And we moved the secure line for the media center back in further, so that we have things like soft seating and tables and flexible learning environments as part of that open environment, but we can secure down the books, computers, technology, those items. We have our secure vestibule directly adjacent to the side, we have a small addition that goes on to the building to accommodate the office in that location. We're looking at the other referendum components, but the other big piece of, part of tours, it's maybe a little different than the referendum diagram, is this idea of creating resource areas and flexible learning environments, which would be, probably the best way to describe it is, think of the student that's doing learning outside the classroom, sitting on the floor in the hallway, working with a para or an aide doing a makeup test. Hallway's not really a very conducive learning environment. And so at this building, we're looking at taking two of the classrooms in each wing and putting an addition onto the building to pull those out and to create that zone directly outside groups of classrooms in each one of those wings to accommodate that. Our earliest learning, kindergarten, first grade, does not have that component, but where we've got more independence with our slightly older students that would accommodate that learning aspect as well. We're integrating this with a lot of the maintenance, those long-term facilities maintenance projects. The new playground does get installed this summer. We're going to look at parking and bus loop options with both of these because these occupy campus approaches as we look forward. At our STEM, this building's a little bit different, three-story building as opposed to the one-story building that RDLS has. Again, secure office at the front, but a lot of our conversations with this building revolved around how are we organizing the building as we stack up vertically within the building, and what do those flexible learning spaces look like in that building as we go up. So at the first floor, we've located preschool in that northeast corner, which should make drop-off a little bit easier in terms of the overall site plan, and again, we'll show that in just a moment. We have a kindergarten at that main level, and then we have our special education suite, music making up the south part of that, and our gym occupies the core of that building as it does currently. We'll be reorganizing the kitchen as part of that process as well. But as we move up into the upper levels, that's really where we're going to see much more of that renovation and changes to those areas with those extended learning environments on both the north and the south side of each one of those core areas. Our specialty lab focuses, moved to the north side, so we've got our tech specialists, our art, our science, our environmental labs, and then we have our first and second grade on the second floor, second and third, or excuse me, third, fourth, and fifth on the upper levels. Our media center has that same concept of moving the secure line back a little bit further, so the front half can be that open, flexible learning space, and that accommodates small group activities, one-on-one, pull-out special education adjacent directly to the classrooms, and really is much more of a 21st century learning approach to how we're seeing new building design. So we feel that we can renovate both these elementarys to accommodate that in that aspect. As I mentioned, when we take a look at campus design, and we have two buildings, especially where we have tough parking situations, we really want to start by separating our parents and our buses. We always say we can train bus drivers, we can't train parents to drive where we want them to go. So a safer approach is to get them separated. And we also have a number of vans on the side, so there's really a number of different ways to look at this. And we're showing you two options for the site in terms of campus approach here. We still would maintain our vans on the east off of 12th Avenue, but we're looking at moving the buses to the back of the building, the south side of the building, and doing a combined bus loop or a bus corral for both buildings, so that as school exits, students would come out from each site out to the buses. We have an easy way for buses to leave the site, we're creating more staff parking in the back in both options, and the front area would be designated specifically for parent pickup and drop-off and parent parking, which should completely separate that bus traffic and create a much safer situation. Now, what we've done is, knowing that the pool is an issue, we've looked at the site both ways. One would be without the pool on site and creating a much cleaner approach in terms of the buses stacked up and in alignment, but we can achieve the same quantity of buses, less staff parking in option two, still has the ability for the buses to turn around, it would just create a little bit different zone for where the students go, they go to the bus area A or B, because it puts the buses in a slightly off-center alignment. You can see the counts there in terms of the quantities. Both options greatly improve the traffic flow on site. We don't need a decision, obviously, tonight on this, but our civil engineers will be on hold until we can decide which approach are we going to do and design for this. So it will be a decision we have to make at some point in the future. At the high school, we are most of the way through the core planning process, we probably have a couple more meetings to go. They're still in developing the criteria, getting us a lot of the components and pieces that we're looking at. A big part of our driver for our discussions right now is not only how does common space work, how can we connect the areas in the building, the cafeteria, all the way through the building down to the gym, for example, as you'd see in a new high school design, but also what is circulation like in the building currently? Where are the pinch points? Where are the areas that are tough to supervise? As we fold in that dialogue around what are those extended learning environments, how are we going to address some of the issues? And we know that we'll be doing things like connecting the circulation loop on the second and third floor, the upper level of the high school, which we're making improvement, but how we renovate those spaces and work together with them is still a big part of that discussion. Tomorrow, we're meeting with student representatives to get more input from them, and they'll probably have another couple of meetings with the core planning group before we'll be able to finalize this schematic design approach for this building. We do have some furniture pilot test rooms that are planned for the upcoming school year as well, so not only do we have extended learning environments, it's a big part of the educational world, but also the type of furniture and things that are much more conducive to rearranging rooms, changing it from lecture-style to small group discussion to more one-on-one format, that's an important part of that process. Not a lot changes in terms of the high school site as much as it does at the other two campus sites. And then we, as part of the ongoing process, we have a number of meetings that take place. I'll check back over to you guys.
As I mentioned, the city meetings, we've started, we had one with the city planner already. Wednesday morning, I had my first more formal meeting with the building official. I do have multiple meetings with him every week, so we talk informally quite a bit, but the idea there is to get them on board. Your existing buildings have a lot going on, not necessarily everything is currently up to code, nor does it need to be, until you start doing things like adding additions, and then certain things take into effect, and we want to make sure that, how we interpret what those things are, and the city is on the same page. So we'll be working on those meetings throughout the whole designing period.
And then in terms of the consultants, there's other consultants involved in the projects, surveys on the four projects we have at hand right now, they're all kind of combined sites, because we have RDLS and STEM as one site, so we have a survey proposal that we've received for that site, and then also the high school central bus garage as a site as well. So we have those, we're analyzing them, and we'll be looking to recommend to move forward with one of those firms, so we can get the work completed in June. And then we're also working with Amy Satterfield and IEA on some of the environmental consultant plans, to make sure when we get our schematic design documents ready, that we're meeting with them and going over how we mesh together, what do we need for abatement, what do they have on their plans and their surveys as well. And then in terms of project communications, in regards to project communications, excuse me, communication's a key to success of any project. We have our project oversight committee meeting... We have our project oversight committee meetings every other week on Wednesdays, and we also have internal communications and reporting with the weekly status updates. As Superintendent Unoski referenced, we do have the, the updates are being posted on the district website. And then once we get into construction, we will have some monthly status reports, which also include pictures of this, of the projects going on. In terms of external communications, we've got the project website, the updates on the website, and then design presentations that we will give to you all. And then also in the future, when we get to the point, we'll start having open houses to let people come in and see what we've been working on and what we have planned. In regards to our design timeline, we're working in schematic design right now, which is the big boxes in the core planning groups. And by the end of this summer, we should have those four projects, RDLS, our STEM, Central, and the high school wrapped up. And then we'll move into the design development process, and we'll come back to you with a design development presentation in early fall. And then after that's approved, we move into construction drawings to get these projects bid in late fall or winter to begin working early 2019. Any questions?
I hear you say something about student council or feedback, right? I'm curious to see what kind of feedback are we collecting, if any, from parents and from staff as to especially our decision for STEM and RDLS and the transportation and what's the significance?
So the, the parents and the staff and the community was invited to the core planning group meetings. And in those meetings, we discussed the, the key points of what needed to be accomplished. And at the RDLS and STEM side, one of them was the, the safety and security of the pickup and drop-off. So we heard that loud and clear amongst many other things that are going to be incorporated in the design. So that's how that took place. In regards to the specific student meeting, there's a, a meeting at the high school with the students scheduled for tomorrow, I believe.
I would say that there's some things that are a little bit more subjective that work well for guaranteeing a lot of input on. Traffic flow and function is really one that I think you have to rely more on best practices and what's worked well in other situations and sites. Oftentimes, when we're looking at things, the fallback position from people is, well, that's not what I have now, so I don't see how that would possibly work. That one, you almost have to trust us a little bit to say, this is a much better plan and approach, and we can get things to work a little bit more cohesively. So when it comes to traffic design, we tend to not gain as many outside opinions. We certainly work with the facilities group, but we tend to work more with our civil engineers and with the traffic consultants in terms of the best approaches for those things.
Well, and not being an expert on any of that, it certainly seems like the plan, both of them, as outlined here, would be a huge improvement over what we have. And I think that seems pretty clear to all of us who have heard also loud and clear that it is a problem that we need to solve.
And just as a reminder, within our referendum survey, which occurred last spring, approximately 650 people responded, safety, security, and traffic flow specific to STEM, RDLS, was one of those. Security across the district, but that was one of the areas specifically identified and utilized and asked for in that, in that referendum campaign.
I think that's one of the important things to point out is in the core planning groups, all of the foundation goes back to kind of what was the scope of the project? So what do we submit to the Department of Education as far as the scope of the project? What do we ask our voters for specifically? So a lot of that then applies more to, okay, how do we make this real at the building versus coming up with additional ideas or additional recommendations according to that original scope? So it's more of the application and making that fundamental. It's also been fun to kind of pop in on some of those, and it's like, oh, we can do that? Oh, that's a possibility. It's, you know, there's a lot of different priorities and choices are being made, but I think it's kind of opened their eyes to some of the potentials of some of these changes of how they can improve their educational environment, or for teachers, the instructional environment is a part of that as well.
I do have a couple of questions, and I saw it hand in the audience, and we can't, we can't take questions from the audience, but if you want to write it down and slide it, I think one of us would be glad to ask.
There are forms in the, right by the entrance if you want to write something down.
The, the two questions that I had, one is, is from a community member who looked at this plan and wanted to, to know whether these two drop-off parking options at RDLS would protect the paved play area that currently exists, given just that is an important space for, for kiddos to play basketball, to play foursquare. And so whether that is going to continue to be present even if it's not currently in the same place?
Yes, the play area does remain intact, and we do it under, actually during the day, what we usually find is we'll have a bus loop in the back of the building. We're actually able to utilize that for hard surface play area as well. So we extend the amount of hard surface play that we have available because the buses only come for school and after school, and so it gives us that.
And then my other question is to meld together some of the, the comments that we had from our, our guests, and then I think the comment that you made about how we're not making a decision tonight about the pool, but we are going to need to make a decision about the pool. So I just wanted to ask the question, what is our timeframe on that? Because I respect folks who are passionate about this and want to seek out funds and see if it's possible to raise that dollar amount, but I also just want to get a sense of how much time are we talking about here that we have to really make that decision?
If you're going to say that the timeframe that we presented tonight, we would need to know probably by the end of June, which direction?
It's one meeting. One meeting.
One meeting.
Although ample, I mean, not ample, but some time for offline conversation. I mean, as far as your guys' process in terms of working with, because I know that drawing in stakeholders is a big thing, that's very important to you guys, in terms of sort of your design process with your core planning groups, et cetera. How does that unfold? You know, again, if we're looking at, but let me just step back, one step. Was maintaining the pool at that site, was that a priority that was raised during the facility study or subsequent from stakeholders at the school?
Going, going way back, so when it all started, the pool actually was specific to that part of the facility study. We didn't go in to assess it, begin with a dollar amount at that point to bring it up to current status, and it was kind of that piece that was just.
Got it. So there, so we have, we have a little bit of, perhaps some, some sort of information vacuum potentially with exactly where we was standing.
Although if we do, one of the reasons or one of the connectors to this, we did the survey, there were eight specific questions. Depends on how we define the pool.
Right.
As we recall, we asked about deferred maintenance, safety and security, improving traffic flow, laboratory areas, improving common areas, renovation of media centers, redesigning classrooms, and athletics facilities. Receiving the least support for referendum funding was athletic facilities, and receiving the largest opposition was also athletic facilities. We also asked it as a negative-based question, which were bad ideas, bad ideas strongly would cause you to not approve a referendum. And athletic facilities led with 32%, and media centers were sort of second in the oppose the referendum 19%. And so then it really depends whether or not we're talking, well, that's from referendum funded. And so that really wasn't something that we then pursued, nor did we pursue other athletic areas other than from a deferred maintenance perspective.
Right. You know, it clearly was not, it clearly was not something that we presented to the voters prior to asking for a referendum. That is definitely true.
Second question, other than right now, you've shown us one schematic that uses that acreage to enhance our traffic flow, sort of security, traffic flow, safety priority. Are there other, at this point, are there other ideas on the table for that particular acreage or per square footage? You said you showed a second option with that, that's still present, yeah?
Really from the ideal use for that, if you don't have a pool in that location, would be to create a much cleaner bus loop in the back, not have the buses stacked, or it really, it maximizes how if we had a clean site, we would be looking at where we put a bus loop that would work well with the two schools. And this is not, actually not unlike a project we just completed together in Princeton, where we had two elementary schools on the same site, had a straight bus loop on the backside of the building, very similar to this. So that would be the best use for it if it's not being.
Some of the other kind of concepts that we're tossed around, actually creating some sort of a road, if you will, on the backside and just coming straight through. We talked about coming up, and I know this must be 69th, and coming through a right angle into the, the back of the, the site as well. All of those now took the field's out of commission. So besides these two options, there are potential other options, but those potential other options have, they are just no longer effective.
We, we did actually also, I'll tell you briefly, the idea, have we ever infill the pool before in, in place, use an aluminum shell, for example? Could certainly do that. We've done that before. It does not make a basketball court because it's not the same size or the same height that would be needed. We've done it where we've infilled it for office space or other types of functionality. We've done it where we've done more aerobics or fitness based sets of things, but short of the need saying, well, we need this type of space is probably not the best use of it. Either look at all of the things in, or still the same mechanical issues, building have a lot of issues to deal with that you would have no matter what, what was the pool inside of.
In your experience working with buildings of the vintage of our buildings, so most of these are kind of mid-century buildings. Typically, when you're updating a mid-century campus to a 21st century campus, given changes in transportation patterns, changes in school choice, the fact that a lot of kids now are commuting from long-term businesses to school, what are you typically finding is in terms of the ratio of parking space, traffic flow space? Would it be typical that a site, you know, a mid-century building, you need to add more parking and traffic flow space?
That's the number one issue that we typically found when we're just looking at the sites, is they weren't designed for the number of drivers we have currently today. It was much more common when the buildings were built, they had blockers or bus, excuse me, bike riders in the neighborhoods. They were much more densely populated with students and a group from a needy area. Additionally, parents were more likely to tell their kids, you walk to school like I did, as opposed to I will drive to school for safety and security reasons. And so that's a big shift. And also the fact that it's not an elementary school, middle school, it's two elementary schools on site is a big change for this site as well. And so that would be a driver in terms of what we take a look at in terms of sites. We also have a much larger percentage of students participating in athletics and activities outside. It's always more green space, more, more even ball field space, soccer space, that type of thing, a lot more use on the site, just more, more active.
These two buildings are probably sitting on what, 60 acres as opposed to?
Yeah, so we're trying to squeeze a lot of activity into a sort of structurally small space.
60 acres in, in what community?
Yeah, not in a, in a public.
So, so you mentioned that the timing for, that you would need to inform the consultants would, would be next June, would be June. Is there penalty if we deferred that?
It's not so much that we look at it as penalty, in order for us to bid the documents, put the construction documents packages together, knowing we're going to do site work, that would be the timeframe that we would need to have in order to be able to be working on things, break the ground in the spring. Probably the biggest penalty is if we wait and we don't do the site design, we have contractors mobilizing on site in different periods of time, and you have the inflation of, if you take it out of years, a 4%, 5% inflation. So it's more of a theoretical penalty as opposed to a penalty.
So, so the cost of delay, if, if we wanted to wait and see, see how support for the pool unfolded, would be maybe some additional construction costs and, and multiple periods of construction instead of keeping it clean and?
Correct. You know, one of the benefits of doing site design and construction simultaneously in the building is during the construction period, we'll need places for the contractors to have their construction trailers, their, their staff working there. And so when you tear the parking lots up at that time, you have the place to do that, it creates that staging area for contractors, and so we have a few more of those types of issues to work through as well.
There could be a potential that the city, the review process with the city, they want to look actually at access and, and all the parking requirements and everything like that, once you've seen that a plan for, for their review. I'm assuming they would work with us if they, they felt there was a need to say they were going to separate the two projects and, and do it on different years, but that is a potential to, they, they might do, if they have better access to do it in this project.
I have a non-pool related question, so if there are other pool or parking lot related questions.
For the audience's benefit, the two gentlemen on my right are project construction managers. And the two gentlemen on the left in suit codes are architects.
Better fancy guys.
Construction guys, architect guys.
Sort of wrap-up pool from, from my sharing. So again, from our survey, I would be hard-pressed to recommend to the board that we funded that from a referendum perspective. And so knowing the prospective timeline information that I would need to not come forward with recommendation with June, that would kind of help educate me, would be, and again, I just transparently know very little about capital facilities. I'm not a handy person. I don't know the difference between why something would be four and a half million or a million. I would need to know some understanding information around a timeline or feasibility about funding this type of a possible project. And hearing, if we're hearing a perspective that perhaps we should pick our time, what would be sort of a timeframe? So for me to not recommend it, our next board meeting, I'd have a better understanding of, of how it would be funded and what would be a timeframe of understanding that information so that I could educate myself as to what would be the logical next steps or how would I create that next steps in our plan?
And then this question, which is a great one. Can you speak to how in, in this capital facilities process, we'll be making schools more handicap accessible, especially based off of some of the current lack of functionality at the school, which might be the high school? But I imagine this could be consistent across a number of our buildings, unfortunately. And so examples would be slow installing elevators, ramps being too steep for wheelchair-bound students to roll up, and just some of the general layout constraints that students or staff members with disabilities may experience.
As part of the process with school construction, school design, the state does actually require us to meet minimums for PDA accessibility issues. Anything that we do new has to obviously meet that, but they can have us spend up to 20% of our budget to address existing accessibility issues in the building as well. And so they, there's a checklist of items that they consider the biggest items, starting with bathroom accessibility, doorknobs and handles, ability for everybody to get to occupied spaces. And so we take that into consideration as we're looking at all aspects of this. A big part of the long-term facilities maintenance is redoing all the bathrooms within the district, and so that gets addressed to that standpoint. But as we're going in and looking at each classroom, we're looking at what are the issues here, what has to be met. Probably the biggest challenge is going to be the two ramps at the high school between the classroom link and the commons link and how we deal with that. But we know that as we're looking at different additions on the building, we're looking at elevator service and other items to see what improvements can be made, or building that into a short and in long-term plan for the future so you have a way of addressing it with the district as you go on with your maintenance approach.
Okay. There are no further questions? Thank you very much.
All right, so let's indeed shift that agenda. You're going to move to our peer review update and bring our QCOM peer reviewer team up to talk about some of the changes in our peer review process. Do you want to take a two-minute transition?
Like a recess?
No.
Yeah, we'll just let people shift. There's, there's a lot of people moving around.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Those guys are the host. Those guys are the host. All the stuff we've done, we've, 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 we've.
Yeah, yep.
So our, so our.
Yes.
All the stuff we've done, we've, we've, we've.
All right, so let's tee, let's tee things back up for our QCOM team. So for those who are in transition, please feel free to stay or continue conversations out in the hallway. But with that, I'm going to turn things over to Nancy Statchell, Principal.
But with that, I'm going to turn things over to Nancy Statchell, Principal Sheraton Hills Elementary, and the team from QCOM.
Hello, everybody. Excited to be here. I'm hired by QCOM and I'll let Jonathan Hayer and Emily Burnt are here as well to help with the presentation. Just to give you a quick overview, the QCOM steering committee has been meeting throughout the entire year, taking into account feedback we've received and information that you as a board have received too in terms of survey information about how staff feels about our QCOM program, what's working, what's not. And so we really looked at feedback from staff. We looked at feedback from principals and administrators. We looked at new learning from other districts, kind of pulling QCOM programs and information from other districts to see ways that we could improve. I mean, the other reality is programs like QCOM should be reviewed regularly and the program was written, how many years ago now? Four years ago? So really taking a look at some of the major pieces of it to say, how can we really improve it? There are changes being proposed on all these levels. And if anybody can tell me what PGP means, I have a prize for you. No kidding. It is?
Professional growth plan.
You don't count.
You are ineligible.
In elementary.
In elementary. I agree. So the professional growth plan, you knew that?
She can have my prize. She's a plan.
Professional growth plans are the individual plans that teachers write about what is it within their practice that they want to improve. The peer review process, we have four peer reviewers in the district that go in and observe continuing contract teachers and provide them with feedback to improve their teaching. And then we have our mentoring program, which is the program to support teachers that are new to the profession, new to our district. And then we have our learning academy program, which is, learning academies are about professional development that we do for our teachers that is done by our teachers, by our staff, and how do we look to improve that? So as we go into this, I'm going to cover a couple part of that. I'm going to talk about the professional growth plan goals and then turn it over to these guys to talk more about the rest of it. Any questions so far? So the big thing on the professional growth plan, teachers write two different, there are three different goals included within the QCOM program. There's the professional growth plan, which is your individual growth plan. There's your professional learning community goal, and then there's the school improvement plan goal. And oftentimes, the professional learning community goal is tied in to that overall school improvement goal. For example, it may be, we're going to improve reading scores by X percentage of these students and be specific about students. So it gets to that level. The next level down is that professional growth plan goal. And those are the things that, for me as a T, if I'm a teacher, that those are the things that I really want to work on and improve within my practice. And if I do those things well, that should increase the, my opportunity to make my professional learning community goal because we'll be increasing student achievement, which then should also increase student achievement for the entire school. So we backed up the professional learning plan goal and we wanted to tie it in with the Charlotte Danielson framework. The Charlotte Danielson framework is the evaluation tool that we use in the district to provide teachers with feedback on where they stand in terms of meeting the standards of effective teaching. And there's four parts to the Danielson framework. The first part is around planning. What do you do for planning? How well do you know your content and your pedagogy? How well do you know your students? How well do you do at planning cohesive lessons, assessments, those types of things? The second part, domain two, is really the classroom environment. Those are the things that are, are you creating a respectful and welcoming community within your classroom? Are you setting a culture for learning within your classroom? How are you managing student behavior and classroom procedures? Those kinds of things. Domain three then is the instructional piece. So what is your communication with students? Questioning, discussion techniques, student engagement? How are you actually using assessment as you teach? You know, your ability to be flexible and responsive as things come up. And then domain four is professional responsibilities. It's things like your reflection on your instruction. It's looking at your record-keeping practices, your participation in your professional learning community, a lot of those types of things. So when we looked at the professional, or the professional goal plan, we looked at and asked the question, what can we focus on that are things that somebody coming into the room could actually observe and see and give you feedback on? So that's why you'll see where it says that teachers will create a professional growth plan focused on component 2A through D or 3A through E. Those are the classroom environment and instruction. Those are the things that for me as a principal, I can walk into a teacher's classroom and I can give them feedback on how they're doing on their professional goal plan because I can see those things. The peer reviewers going into the classroom can observe those things and give people feedback on that. So that's why we narrowed it down to say, focus on these areas and be very specific about what you want to change in your practice. How are you going to improve in those areas? And we can use the Danielson framework then for teachers to be able to cite, these are the specific things I want to do to improve, to move from basic to proficient or proficient to distinguished, because that criteria is all right there in the Danielson framework. So that's our plan for PGP goals. And then the PGP goals would be shared with the peer reviewers. So when the peer reviewer comes into the classroom to observe, they'll be able to give feedback about that as well.
So Nancy Statchell, a quick question here. One of the, one of the great things that I get to have as a, as a position when I am recertifying in my boards is I get to apply that time to my CME for licensure. This is a similar sort of looks like professional development. Do teachers get any sort of CEU credit? Does this help them? Is this one of those things you can sort of kill to the response now?
The PGP goal is a part of the requirement for the QCOM program. It's one of the goals that they have to write and there is a payout for that as well. The learning academies are where you get into the professional learning and the opportunity for different things with that.
Thank you, Nancy. The next part that we want to present to the board tonight is talking about the peer review process changes that we would like to make for next year. And I just wanted to add just a little bit about the Danielson framework. We've been using it for three years. We have a board for four, we've been using Danielson for three years. And it's also, one of the reasons we chose it is because it has other rubrics, let's say for psychologists or social workers or even a school nurse, so we can use those rubrics to really evaluate all the certified staff that we have. Changes for next year would be changing the amount of evaluations and observations from three to two. And the off-cycle teachers will also be getting two observations. And the on-cycle teachers will be, would get one observation by a peer view and one observation by an administrator. You can see the sequence dates on the screen as well. And there's really two big reasons for this, two big benefits of this that we are looking for as we make these changes. The first big benefit is to free up the time of the trained peer reviewers to offer more coaching for teachers. This is something that teachers indicated that they would like to have is more coaching time. Right now, we do the observation process, it's more of a, it has an evaluative component to it. We go in and it's, we don't have as much time as we would like to, to do the coaching piece. The teachers have really been asking for that and that was evident in the survey that we got from teachers. The second big benefit to this would be in the mentoring program. So peer reviewers will also be able to deliver mentoring services to our newest teachers in the district. So this would lead us to the mentoring changes for the program. And peer reviewers will be able to mentor teachers that are new to the profession or two or fewer years, two years or fewer in the profession, and they will provide direct mentoring for them for two years. And then on the third year would be an interactive for our newest teachers in Richfield. Reasons for changing this process would be to add consistency to our mentoring process that we have right now and also to, I would say make it more robust for our newest teachers.
Well, and as, our mentoring program now is that we take teachers that already have a full-time assignment and we ask them to serve as a mentor for new teachers. And so obviously, they have their full-time assignments, so they're limited in their opportunity to go in and observe and really coach those new teachers. And so by putting this as part of our peer reviewers' responsibility, those peer reviewers can really go in and be that coach and really working with those new teachers and providing them with more support because obviously their schedule is more flexible during the day. The other thing that I, just to point out that we did is we pushed back the cycle, the sequence that the peer reviewers would not start observing on contract teacher, contract teachers until October, because we know that first six weeks is really an important time. And if you're a brand-new teacher, being able to have somebody that can be in that classroom with you on a weekly basis at least, you know, elbow to elbow, helping you understand how do you really structure your classroom, how do you really set up and going is a key part of it. And then it's the same person with a high level of coaching support throughout the entire year.
I would also add to that, that of course in Richfield, we want to attract and hire the best, but we also want to retain the best. And we believe that through a really robust mentorship program, we can keep those really highly qualified folks right here in Richfield where we want them.
And then we're also going to continue with our CIT members, that's the school improvement team members, to be kind of that connecting point for teachers who I have more experience but are still new to the district. They need somebody to connect with to let them know the nuts and bolts of the building, but they will be the people that will provide those resources for teachers that are new to Richfield and not new to the school.
I have a couple. The school improvement team, you said what they are. How are they, how does someone find themselves on the school improvement team?
Sure. So school improvement team is part of the QCOM grant that we've written. They are, the positions are posted. Each building has two, one to two representatives for, for their building and it's based on how many teachers they have in each building. And so they've been able to apply and they've been hired by, by the steering committee and the principal in each building. And their role is to be on the school improvement team and leadership teams as the administrator of all the building has decided to be able to use them. And then they also have added roles of some of the reporting that we do for the QCOM program. So that's how they're assigned.
Thank you. You'd mentioned the change in the review process. It was from three to two for off-cycle and it's listed as two for, what is it currently for those who are on-cycle?
So currently right now for on-cycle teachers, they get observed three times a year as well.
They also do three, okay.
But it's two by a peer viewer and once by an administrator. So the way that works is you, it's a three-year cycle and every third year you get observed by your administrator.
That basically eliminated one of the peer review cycles for people in order to free up the peer reviewers' time to do, provide the metrics.
Mentoring, coaching, okay.
Do evaluations score or is there a choice for one of them to not be scored or scored?
So for the learning academy, I like that you have all the different ways that people can access that. How do you decide what types of things you put in learning academy? Is it something set? Do you ask teachers? Do you do a survey? How do you?
Hit the first part again, Christine.
So how do you decide what kinds of things you offer, what classes in learning academy courses? The first part was saying how great it was that you have all those different options.
Thank you. So of course, same changes are represented here, but past practice or current practice is that learning academies are mostly driven by teachers. There have been surveys that have been sent out to staff and then staff has shared out information on what popular topics are out there, what are teachers asking for, so that folks who want to teach a learning academy can tailor it around that. And so the process now is that teachers submit an application for a learning academy and the steering committee approves or sends it back for further questions or sometimes does not approve the course for various reasons. And the courses right now are all for eight CEUs. And what we'd like to do is make some changes so that teachers could earn up to 12 CEUs. They could do that in several different ways. So right now, if I facilitate a, a learning academy, it's eight hours, there's no flexibility and then I don't get any compensation for wanting to learn something new from another one of my colleagues. This format means a learning academy could be anywhere from two to 12 hours in length. Sometimes you might have a topic that really is a two or three-hour topic. And so we wanted to create a larger amount of flexibility within the amount of hours that can be dedicated. We'd also like to increase participation among staff. Currently, we're at about 40 to 45% of our staff participate in learning academies. Feedback from staff has indicated that sometimes it's difficult to attend physically. So we'd like to offer online classes, perhaps blended learning is an option, even courses in the summer when folks may have more time devoted to that. And also an in-class option still on the table. One really exciting change that, that we're proposing to learning academy is to include a peer-to-peer reciprocal process, meaning that if Jonathan and I are both teaching fourth grade, and I know he has a lot of great strategies, I really want to go watch him teach, but it's hard for me to do so because we're, we're on a similar schedule. Our schedules don't allow for that. So the peer-to-peer process would allow teachers to be paid for up to three hours and get three hours of, or three CEUs as well. It would include a pre-observation conference and observation and a post-conference. That's also something that teachers had indicated, they'd really like to see, they'd like to see other folks in the building or in other buildings and, and what they're doing as far as strategies that are really, really good instructional moves. Another change is that instead of learning academy being paid in lump sums, currently taking a course earns a teacher $250, while facilitating a course earns a teacher $500. They, they will all be paid at the rate of $35 an hour, which is in line with how much we pay for curriculum writing right now. And then that also allows people to both facilitate and attend courses in any, any type of combination. Other questions about the changes to learning academy? And then finally, other questions for the steering committee in general about some of the proposed changes that you've, that's what kind of listened to this evening.
Again, I just want to also reflect that I'm really, what I'm most pleased with is that I feel like you have put some intentionality into making this a process as integrated into workflow so that, you know, it's just not, I mean, basically taking this away from an extra curriculum activity to something that is really just sort of part of being teacher. And is, you know, I think is, I like to see that because I feel like that systematizes kind of raising the bar systemically across the district. And so I want to applaud you for that work and having that common framework of Charlotte Danielson.
Thank you. Yeah, I just thank you for the very thoughtful changes that are really obvious, that you've thought a lot about feedback and what people are saying they need and they want. And it's exciting to see how you're responding to that.
We appreciate the time to present.
Thank you.
All right, so last item, the mock OSHA report. So what I want to do is think of this as a dress rehearsal. So instead of letting OSHA come in and tell us the things that we're doing right and doing wrong, we kind of do a practice run, just sort of see how things are going, have people check all the possible options, possible things to fix and possible things going well. And so we do that before OSHA comes in. And so here is our report for Mr. Holgi and the team on mock OSHA.
And it's actually a little more comprehensive than just the OSHA report. So we partner with IEA and have done, done so for lots of years, decades, I think. And one of the things that we found is that they really work hard to make sure that we're compliant and in many cases, as you'll find out tonight, even more progressive than what we are required to do, but are doing for the safety of our kids here in Richfield schools. So Amy and Dan are going to share some of their updates and information, and then there are a couple of agenda items later on in the meeting that are reflective in this report as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to these guys.
So like Craig said, my name's Daniel Holcomb. I work for IEA Institute for Environmental Assessment. IEA provides environmental health and safety services to the district and I've been with Richfield as the account manager since January 2018. Richfield as the account manager since January of this year. And then this is Amy Satterfield, she's our Director of Business Development, and we're both here to do an overview of past projects, current projects, future projects, as well as radon, lead, and water plan and testing.
I hate to talk about the lead and water. So recently, a new statute was created through the legislative boards that the schools need to do a number of things regarding lead and water, direct result of Flint, Michigan and all of that excitement. And so the plan requirements in a nutshell are that the school has to be on a testing schedule, you guys already are and have been since 2009, and that location of the taps need to be identified for potable water and food prep, and that the test results be made to the public. I'm paraphrasing, it's really, you know, much more than that, but in a nutshell, those are the key points. And one of the things that we wanted to bring attention to is that your district has had a lead and water management plan well before it was required, back in 2009-ish, I think. So you've been dedicated to that since before it was a problem. Last testing round was 2013, and so that means that upcoming in the next fiscal year, you'll be doing your lead and water on the next five-year rotation, so you've already been doing that. Your management plan has included and will continue to include, per the statute, again, you're already doing it, identifying which locations in the building need to be tested, mapping those, and then testing those locations. The change is, is that the MDH, the statute, the MDE really want communication with the parents, so one of the requirements was to create part of a communication plan. Your district will be putting that management plan and information on the health and safety page for the website, and then also that the parents would be notified that there's testing going on, the results are available through the district calendar, which is where some of the other notifications, I think, go already. So they'll be getting that, and that will be perfectly in compliance and a little bit above and beyond, because you guys have been doing this for so long, with the statute for the lead and water. So not quite sure if everyone saw it, radon's been in the news like lead and water was previously. Again, your district is proactive, been doing radon testing. And so they aired that news report, so we wanted to just kind of have a little bit of a refresher. It's that odorless gas that is occurring in Minnesota as a radon state, there are a number of states around the country that just geographically and geology allows us to have radon present. And so it typically moves up through the floors, homes are as a big concern, almost more of a concern, you spend more time there. But with the schools, the guidelines have been out to do testing periodically in the districts, and so your district has been doing that as well, testing for radon on that schedule starting back in 2009. A lot happened in 2009, there was a lot of tension to health and safety, so your district was right on board with that. And we've been testing, and so the next testing round will be in the 2019, 2020 school year. And we're following those requirements that are, that we test those occupied classrooms that are on the ground or below ground. We don't do upper levels because we want to catch it if it's coming in the building at the lower levels, and if it's not there, it's not going to be above in different levels. So your district has been doing that, you have a plan in place, it's not required, but you do have a management plan and have had one. So that's just one of the things that we want to talk about with that lead and water, there is a requirement for that at this point in time. Radon is a recommendation, you guys have been doing that and are diligent in that.
All right, so now I'll discuss the mock OSHA inspection. This occurred in February of this year. The person who conducts it is Mike Weigle from Metro Exu. He provides districts in the metro with this mock OSHA inspection to help prep them for an actual OSHA inspection that did occur. So he's here annually, and this year he focused on the high school. The high school is on, is on every other year schedule, but all schools in the district have been inspected by Mike Weigle. So this, so this year, the focus points were like science rooms, art rooms, boilers, kitchens, maintenance areas, wood shops, metal shops, stuff that OSHA would focus on that did come in-house because of equipment, hazardous materials, chemicals, stuff like that. So he came in here, he was here for a few hours, and he did have some findings. The findings included a lot of electrical, it could have been a blocked electrical panel, could have been exposed wires, an extension cord used as permanent wiring, improper electrical box used as a drop-down. I have some pictures on the next slide that we can go through as well. Power strips that were attached to machines, you can't do that as well. Emergency eyewashes were not being flushed weekly, they didn't have caps on them as well to help protect them from getting clogged. Fire extinguishers not being checked, needing proper guarding on paper cutters, and then also needing a 95 respirators for our teachers. And with the help of Dan Kreßinger and others, we've corrected all these findings since the inspection. And we also did have Dan, Dan Kreßinger did a presentation to the management team as well as custodians and maintenance personnel, because all these can be found in all schools, it's not just the high school. So it's best that everyone's aware of, you know, what they are, and you know, if you walk into a room, what to be looking for, just in case there was an inspection that did occur. So the minimum maximum possible OSHA fines is based off of the OSHA rates as to the type of fine. Maximum would be if the, if the OSHA fine was multiple, you know, extension cords were being used, stuff like that, or if you have had that fine in the past and you've never corrected it. So the minimum would be a good faith fine, it would be, you know, you understand what happened and you fix it right away, it was just one or very few amount. So the number there is just an estimate if OSHA didn't come in-house and they didn't inspect and they didn't find what Mike did find. And here's the pictures, the upper left picture, exposed electrical wires, the box is cracked. Electrical box is not accessible, there was stuff being stored in front of it. Farther right, they reduced an extension cord as permanent wiring, so Dan had an electrician come into the metal shop room and install the drop-down electrical box. Bottom left, paper cutter that didn't have, that did not have the proper guarding, we had new guards, or new paper cutters bought because they did not sell the guard itself. Then also the bottom right, the eyewash not had plugs on top of them to help prevent clogging and all that.
Okay, another fun topic. This is really interesting, I was excited to be able to tell you that your district was doing this. So sports field testing, this is a twofold testing reason to do this. Concussions are a concern, sports concussions and head-to-turf is one of the only ways that a district can try to minimize or control those concussions. When players are hitting each other or other things, you can't necessarily control that. So the district looked into having this testing done on their synthetic field, and like I said, it's twofold because it also, this GMAX testing tells you the hardness of the field, not only for concussions and the sports concern, but then it helps with the facilities department to know maybe where there's some areas that might need some additional maintenance. Those fields look great all the time because they're synthetic, so it's really hard to look at it. A natural grass turf will wear its hard on the sleeve, I always say, you'll get dingy areas or the grass won't grow, or, you know, something will tell you that maybe it's getting compacted. And those synthetic turfs really don't. So this was really good information for the district. They went out, we did the testing, and they did have levels that were below what we would say would be the action level. But the district went out and then was able to understand some of those areas of that field that maybe get some harder play, you know, the center of the field, corner kicks for soccer, those type things really get compacted. So it was really good information from the maintenance side, so they could go out and know how to maintain that field and where to kind of give it special attention for how that field is being used. I believe it's an eight-year-old field, so as they get older, they just, you know, are harder to keep maintained that way. So really good information, and then also, you know, the ultimate goal to try and prolong the life of the field plus prevent injuries of weekends. So that was an exciting thing that the district has done, a lot of the districts around are starting to do that. So just wanted to put that out there as an initiative that your district's doing and looking at from the maintenance and the safety aspect.
Can I ask, is the solution for that typically just adding more of the infill?
You know, it really depends. If it's compacted, a lot of times the solution, you can drop your GMAX points by going through and maintaining it. Coaches are creatures of habit, I'm finding, and they like to put the drills onto one side of the field and you, you know, hit, hit, hit over on one side every practice, and so an area will get compacted, that maybe the field on the next neighboring sports, you know, they go to the left side and drill. And so it's not necessarily always having to add more infill, but understanding the field and being able to know where spots to go over and just fluff it, you know, reposition. Rains and snow melt, you know, it is rubber, it floats, so if you get a 10-inch rain like we had a couple of years ago, you know, that rubber will move around the field, and then they're able to understand the field better and know where to kind of move that back. So not always having to fill it in and spend, you know, money on that, it's just understanding where might need a little more attention. Another thing that happened this year, happens every five years, is the bleacher inspections. So the Minnesota Bleacher Safety Act, we're a state that has this because we don't want kids falling through and getting hurt and injuries on bleachers. So you had your five-years recertification, and I just listed out the locations here that were done. Out of all of this, there were some ties that were broken on the chain link, I'm guessing someone got really excited, you guys were winning, and they pushed on it. But those repairs were made immediately, and so that was really pretty minimal, there's a lot worse out there. So those repairs were made, but your bleachers were inspected, and that's a state statute also that every five, five years those get inspected. So that was something else that happened this year that your district has done for the safety.
Just a summary of what's coming up?
Yeah, summary of what's coming up again, lead and water, sports field testing, districts dedicated to doing that, understand their fields annually. Couple of years will be the radon again, and then any reactive items, you heard ICS talking about on the abatement side that we work with them on, but there's a lot of program changes that might need to happen with health and safety when you change the building and the structure. So sticking with the district and making sure that we're folding those in and our program keeps that up to date as those referendum changes happen to keep things struggling forward that way.
So I think there are a couple of things in the future on the agenda that are based on this.
So one of the things hopefully you see is we are working hard as a district to be very proactive in our work, and as I said earlier, IEA's been a great partner. The other thing is we are coordinating heavily between IEA and the work that they're doing on health and safety, along with our annual long-term facilities maintenance, and then also now partnering with our larger projects that we have going on. So really trying to create efficiencies, so we're not being redundant, we're doing something now that two years from now is going to be changed. And also similar with the budgeting piece, they are kind of our experts on the especially abatement needs and things like that that are taking place in the district and have set up that strategy working for us in the past, but then now also as we reconfigure the buildings and do the major construction, that's all being budgeted and planned in coordination with IEA and ICS involved collectively that way. So specifically the lead and water plan as well as the long-term facilities maintenance budget are in the new agenda items later on this evening. If there are questions right now, we have experts in the room, we can answer those questions, and if they are needing to stay around, I'm sure they would appreciate that, otherwise if the board would like them to stay, I'm sure they would be willing to do that.
We're happy to stay.
I just have a couple of questions going back to the OSHA inspection. Obviously, the goal is zero things discovered. What do we typically find? Like if we've done it routinely, year over, you know, every couple of years, how did this year come? Was it cleaner than average, was it worse than average?
So I think what we found, I'm going to just pop over here, and I asked Dan to pull this information earlier too. This is very consistent with what our previous, the number of incidents as well as the dollar value of the findings have been. We do the high school roughly every other year, kind of on the even years, because that's the largest building, the largest facility, and then we've done some of the other sites kind of in those off-years as well. So very similar, kind of this was a range of 7,500 to 18,000. Last time in '16, it was 9,000 to 1,500, the year before that it was 7,000 to 19,000. One of the things we noticed when we sat down, we saw a lot of the same consistent patterns, whether or not they got fixed, and then all of a sudden people start running extension cords again or things like that. Or we fix a guard on a cutter, but people are cutting that big stack of paper and they don't want that guard to be knocking in. So that's where we did step forward and Dan did some training with our principals and our assistant principals to make sure that those administrators in the buildings see what's going on and see why it's important and understand so that not only are we discovering these things when we're doing kind of our annual walkthrough of the situation with not with the OSHA reviews, but that we have principals and others who are kind of training and being able to work with their teams and say, here's why we need to do this. Part of it is, yes, the OSHA compliance, but it really is about your safety and the safety of the students in the buildings, and so making sure that we're aware of that. So we did take that to the next level of not just relying on our facilities department to take care of it and train people, but with principals hopefully onboard, there'll be more supportive of those pieces as well.
Thanks.
I have some questions on the lead and water study, or actually really it's more about abatement plan, because I think that those recommendations were part of the item that is being brought forward. There were a couple of big outliers there in terms of, there was one sink that had 2,130 parts per billion and another steam kettle at 1,280 parts per billion. So are those, you know, generally speaking, the mitigation plan was about filtering, when you get something that is that much of an outlier, does that tell you something about the pipe or something about the fixture itself, or we just replace the whole thing?
Well, it is a challenge because you can't go through and replace all the plumbing.
Yeah.
So it does get to be investigative. And so what can happen is that even, that's why they want you to test every five years is because some fixtures that one year may be below the EPA's recommended 20, you know, and then they can change because the plumbing changes, the metal, you know, things just change. So what commonly happens is there's fixtures replaced, you know, you go in and you replace those fixtures, and now there's building code requirements that they can't develop and build fixtures that have lead in them. So as you can go through and replace those, then you can replace them with lead-free, and so it's a process that way. So most schools have, you know, levels that come up in some fixtures, especially in older buildings, so they, you know, attack them and replace fixtures and maybe do some investigative or flushing, and then test again to make sure those levels go down. And so it's a challenge that way, there's no exact thing, but it...
It's iterative process.
Yeah, it is, but a lot of times those fixtures are kind of the source just because they're notorious in homes and everything too, and it's usually the first wave of attack. It's usually successful. Does that help?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to commendations.
All right, so we have one commendation today, a commendation from the Director of Community Ed to acknowledge Senior High School Assistant Principal Teresa Rosen, who has served for six years as representative on the Community Education Advisory Council. Teresa served five years as a Richfield representative on the combined Bloomington-Richfield Council and assisted with our startup for our new Richfield Council this year. Teresa's been a great ambassador in carrying out the district's commitment to community involvement and lifelong learning through her representation. So thank you to Teresa Rosen for her service to community education.
Okay, next we have the consent agenda. Is anyone prepared?
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda passes. And we will move on to old business and board policy review, starting with Board Policy 505, Student Disability Nondiscrimination.
All right, so we have three policies tonight. One, we anticipate, or I anticipate asking for approval, 114, and two for further discussion, beginning with 505, Student Disability Nondiscrimination. This is back for the fourth read, we'll call it the fourth first read of this policy. As a reminder, there was a group working on guidelines, and so we have continued to work on this policy and continued to make refinements. work on this policy and continued to make refinements. So Policy 505 is about Student Disability Non-Discrimination, speaking specifically to ironically as it's Policy 505, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. And so we have made language changes within this policy, but then also added three guidelines. As the group of mental health team members within the school district has been meeting to create these guidelines, section 504, Health Plan Flow Chart, which is guideline 505.1. We add guideline 505.2, which is first draft of the Richfield Student Disability Discrimination Grievance Form Report. And then also we have 505.3, which is the next of the pieces of this particular guideline. And so with that, again, fourth time through, but again, the first read of each of these three sets of guidelines developed by the mental health team across all of our schools. And I'm happy to present that and their work to the board tonight. And just as a reminder, we read these for the first time through and obviously if there's a significant change, we will not be asking for pass of this tonight, but just for review.
Well, I appreciated the clarification that you have under the defining section. To me, that reads at this point very clear and so I'm pretty happy with that. And I think that flows through into the forms. So yeah, like that carries through next thing.
So I noticed that the notification for 504 plans also goes out to coaches and extracurricular people. So I was wondering if we provide any kind of training for that staff. I mean, teachers know what a 504 is, they understand it, they know we are legally bound for, to follow those rules. I'm wondering what, if we do anything for coaches that might not be a teacher.
So we're going to lean on Dr. Clarkson for that question?
Currently, we have our attorney Laura Tutz Booth come in and train all of our 504 coordinators. And next year, when that training comes, we'll invite Dave Boyd to come and be a part of that as he oversees all of our coaching and our athletics. So not, the expectation would be that they carry that back out to their, when they communicate with their school, school staff and then also our coaching staff.
And what about like extracurriculars, like say the theater director or something like that?
We, that's a good question and I will take that back and we'll make sure that we have, we'll have to take a look at how we can expand that training to make sure that those that lead, those have access to some type of training, either through the coordinators in the building or participating in the yearly training for our 504 coordinators.
One other question, and I'm sorry if this is in the, in the policy. Because this is a non-discrimination policy, it obviously requires filing of agreements in order to sort of kick in, in some ways. I mean, obviously we would be proactive. Do we have anywhere in student handbooks or, you know, where that, that sort of commitment to non-discrimination is made?
Every year, it is published in the calendar where all of the required notifications are for policies, but we will also be, we're in the process of trying to figure out where it makes sense to locate on the district website. So it's published every year with all the required policies that go out and it does well, I believe it's part of the handbook, but we right now don't have.
Would that be part of the work that you would do with a student who is identified as being eligible for a 504?
Every time that they go through the 504 process, all of their rights are communicated to them or should be part of that in their agreements process.
Does it, does the information go out to parents who, I mean, not everybody knows what a 504 is or, or that if your child has an issue that, or something comes up that they have rights in the, in the district for their kids. A lot of people have no idea. Sometimes a therapist or a psychologist, somebody will tell you, but not always. So is there anything that we send to parents?
Other than what goes out in the required calendar that has all of the notifications about policies, there isn't anything right now that we send out specifically about 504s or anything individually. It's just in the whole calendar where all the notifications are posted. So there would be some access on the website. We haven't figured out exactly where that makes sense, but an actual, no more than any other policy that's communicated out. Or, you know, similar to access to special education services or other types of policies.
I'm just, and not necessarily for the policy, I'm just thinking, you know, mental health is becoming a much more common issue that families are dealing with and it, it seems like maybe we would want to have a proactive way. And I know this was brought up a lot in Reimagine Richfield by the students. So I think maybe trying to come up with a way to communicate that kind of information out, whether it's on the website or something that goes home in the yearly, you know, you fill out a million forms at the beginning of each year for your kids. If there's some other way to get that information to students and parents.
I will bring that back. I know that we have, there has been a lot of conversation about knowing how those services are available. We have mental health resources in all of our schools, but whether or not families always know that those are accessible. So it's just a matter of figuring out the best way to communicate that.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, to me, I feel like it's less about getting another piece of paper into somebody's hands and more about leveraging those personal relationships and having professionals that are engaged with the students and families and advocating for them, which I know that you aim to do and I think this is just sort of embedded in our practice.
Yeah. So we'll, I'll bring that back and we'll just have some more discussion about how to make that more.
And I agree, another piece of paper is not necessarily what we need, so.
No. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so prior to pushing that forward, just as a reminder, we will ask the board to review the guidelines and I just bring that back at our next meeting. Moving assigned to 979, 971, 979.2. Cheers from the audience. All right, so as the board requested, this is a similar, not pushing this forward for passage tonight, trying to gain a better understanding. As we have seen large-scale edits, you have before you, we'll call it the unmarked, more clean copy for the first time. What I have learned as we have worked on this policy is there are many things that weren't necessarily completely following the policy, there were practices within our district in regard to how did we utilize the fields, how we've been moving things forward and how we systemically treated groups and organizations in an effective way all across our, all across our community. The guidelines currently read about our community use of school facilities and grounds. It sort of creates a ranking system and prioritization-based system involving fees, involving how do we do that scheduling. It also does that in guideline 979.1, talking about the use of schools. And then 979.2, talking about the community use of school grounds. And so while I am confident I now, as it is trunk about six or seven pages as we remove the marked-up copies, I'm confident I think I understand the policy at this point. I think the next step is to meet myself and the athletic director with community organization groups to try to understand the impact of the policy so that we can review some of the terminology within there, review how it's being implemented and make sure, one of the things that we've talked about as a board, is as we continue to move policies forward, making sure that our practice aligns to our policy and that our policies are effectively following the vision of our district. So I'm going to suggest that, again, we review that tonight, but the next step for our organization is for the superintendent and athletic director to have that community association conversation to really understand the implications of the policy, how it's being implemented as we continue to move forward.
I appreciate that sentiment and I'm just reflecting that what I, at least what I heard from Ms. Slavin earlier today was a lot about implementation and effective implementation and just getting, yeah, effective, well, really implementation. I was going to say execution, but that would be redundant of the policy. So I think this is all about that piece, so I appreciate your sentiment on that.
I think another thing though, that I also think is important is just the process for this policy. I think my perspective, perception is that we underestimated the impact that this was going to have and I think that is an important lesson for us in terms of how we, you know, start looking at a policy that has this level of implication for community partners and organizations. And so I do think it's important to acknowledge that. And then I would just say one other piece that I asked the superintendent, as we get closer to the point where we feel confident there is something that we can vote on, is to be able to see what level of financial change this would actually represent for some of the different organizations. Maybe it's from the different categories or maybe it's thinking about, you know, organizations that use indoor space versus outdoor space. Because I feel like the cleaned-up version, yes, is much, much easier to read, but I feel like I don't have a good enough sense yet of how this is really going to affect the financial health of our partner organizations. And so I just want to make sure that we have that information in front of us as well.
Well, I think if, if we adhere to the idea that you practice and policy are supposed to align what we're doing currently, if it's reflected in this policy, won't really have much of any financial impact on it if we follow through on that. It's possible that there are groups making, making use of the facilities at a greater level than we've even been aware and then, yes, they could have some impact. But for the ones that we've heard about most locally and most vocally, I don't imagine that there, you know, I'd be surprised if there was, if there was some impact. Truthfully, it would surprise me. I think it would be, it would be frustrating to hear that there, that something was implemented without considering that kind of impact. I don't think there should be.
Yeah, so maybe it's more just a check to ensure that this would not lead to negative financial implications.
Unless there's some extreme, you know, some extreme use or, what's the word I'm
I would just add the communication piece of that. So I really appreciate that we are going to meet face-to-face with these groups and really listen to what they have to say. I think that's an important part of it, that communication back and forth. And it's an opportunity to build a relationship with them. They, those kids will be, you know, our junior varsity university sports students down the road. So I think it's, I think the communication piece is very important.
So next steps, and we may not be back at the next meeting, as I will be reaching out to community organizations, set up that sit-down meeting and try to learn about our user group's perspective and try to make sure that our work aligns to both practice and the policy.
Now, is this meeting going to go beyond? You mentioned a task force was brought up. Is that going to be it or is there going to be actually a task force?
First steps, I think, is to have a conversation and to gain a better understanding and then see where it goes from there. And then I can certainly come back with a recommendation or depending on where they sit, we can go from there.
So we will move on to Board Policy Review 114.
We're going to actually shoot to pass one of these things here. So 114, 114 is about website accessibility, just as a reminder, across the entire United States. And there are people looking at websites to make sure that they are fully compliant, that they're fully compliant and accessible to anybody who might use them. This was looked at prior to our organization updating our website on July 1st. We did do an entire website overhaul and our new website does comply and it is accessible fully by, basically people who are visually impaired or who cannot read their computer screen and need our website to be able to translate into out loud website. So we do have this policy, we did review it at our last board meeting. And then the two guidelines that go with that, the administrative guidelines for how we do that, and then also a grievance form. And the one piece of feedback, if you note grievance form, page 2, line 7, please return the grievance form to the superintendent's office. Just where do we turn in the form if we do, if we do have that complaint? And so I present to you for a second read and asking for hopefully moving this one forward because this will comply with the expectations and the work that we need to do to have a fully accessible website.
I have no questions. Looks like there aren't any, so I will move the policy for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brackey, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and Policy 114 passes. So we will move on to new business and Board Policy 504, Education of Homeless Children.
All right, so we are looking at Policy 504 for a first read. It's the education of homeless children. It just reiterates information with ESSA, the Students Exceeds Acts, and the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, lays out how methodologies are put in place in relation to the education of homeless students. You will also notice guideline 504.1, the homeless highly mobile process, how we provide those rights and services. And then you will also notice transportation form, the homeless highly mobile enrollment form. And so as a district, we do maintain and keep track of this and provide education. The goals of McKinney-Vento is to keep students, regardless of their home status, in their, in their current school of residence, if they would like to remain there. And so with that, I provided you with a first read, the education of homeless children, Board Policy 504.
My one question related to this is, a question slash observation, you can be the judge, but feeling like there isn't anything in the policy as it relates to confidentiality around students and their identification as homeless or highly mobile. And I guess that kind of surprised me in thinking that there probably would be some confidentiality protections that would be in place for students and families. So I guess that's an observation that it wasn't there and a question is whether it should be there.
I will go back and first of all, this isn't a mandated policy, so this is, this isn't one of the administrative policies, so it's one that we're choosing to, or we have in the past had in place. We have practices and we have reporting requirements around that, around, around reporting home, students identified as needing, needing these services and accessing them, but we don't have, we don't have anything in the policy right now. So I'll go back and find out what our practices are, but I know, I mean, it's.
It's also very clearly written in terms of law and data, how we have to protect those. And so it's beyond necessarily the policy of our board, but we could certainly look at whether or not we would need to put that into.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering is if this, if this would not be already covered under our existing data privacy policies.
Homeless highly mobile data tends to have some additional federal-based regulations and I believe perhaps they'd also make it even further private data from, from most other, from most other data.
I can get that information and bring it back. Thank you.
Any other questions about 504 for us to look up? All right, so if you find any additional questions, obviously we'll be bringing this back at our next meeting.
If they're coming up at the same time, could we read number, this 504, 505?
Do you think Policy 504 to be on the 504 plan?
That is true though, it would make a lot more sense.
I think we can probably do that. We'll call it the Paulus Change. Another small contribution.
Okay, so we move on to preliminary 2018, 2019 budget and approval for preliminary expenditures.
Thank you. What I have for your review tonight, and really we will, this is in a very draft form and we'll be coming back in June with more detailed information, but a review of the preliminary budget for 2018, 2019. Most importantly, what we're asking for tonight is authorization to expend up to 30% of that budget for next year as we start our ordering and purchase orders and requisitions moving forward so that we can start receiving things in Ju-, July and August, that we have that authorization here tonight. Just a high-level overview, when we look at our general fund specifically, we're projecting about $67 million in revenue in that general fund. We're projecting about $66 million in expenditures in that general fund and you can see the different categories. What we looked at is working with the Fiscal Planning Advisory Committee, where our anticipated revenues are coming in from the state and from that additional. revenues are coming in from the state and from that additional referendum that was approved by the voters in November, and then looked at some assumptions with our expenditures, and then also looked at using that additional, approximately $1.8 million from the referendum, and how that would be utilized. And so we built in about 12 positions for class size reduction. We also built in some additional staffing for social emotional services and social emotional supports that are coming out of that specifically. And then one of the things that I think we've heard from the board, as well as the Fiscal Planning Advisory Committee, is a strong commitment to try to create a few years of sustainability, so we don't turn around next year and have to start reducing the staff that we're hiring this year, making that assumption. And so we built in some additional funds with that sustainability as well. When we look at this, this is kind of the general fund. Some of the other programs, you can see some of the assumptions that we've made are very similar, as far as our assumptions for staffing, as well as our assumptions for our other ancillary programs, like natural gas and electricity and some of those other supports. And when we drill into kind of, the next page here is working with the school finances model, what we see is a nice snapshot of kind of projected fund balances. We see from our revised budget from our meeting in April, where we, because of enrollment increases from what was originally projected, additional state aid coming in from the state and the formula allowance for this year than what was originally projected, we're anticipating an increase in our unassigned fund balance or our fund balances. This is very preliminary, is some of the assumptions, and we haven't seen kind of where we're exactly ending the year, but we're projecting to see our increase in our fund balance creating that sustainability. And then as we look at this budget build out for next year, we're anticipating about another $700,000 that we're able to put into that sustainability fund. And when we looked at this with Fiscal Planning Advisory Committee, as well as the models that we're using for budgeting, we're hoping, if all of our assumptions hold true, that that will maintain us or sustain us for about three to four years, before we have to start looking at some changes. And so trying to find some predictability that way, obviously, there are a lot of variables when it comes to state funding, when it comes to some of our other assumptions, and just kind of natural attritions and things like that, but as we look at our trends, we feel fairly comfortable with these assumptions, but they are just basically assumptions moving forward as well. So with that, that kind of provides a high-level overview. These are all restricted accounts, that revenue comes in for specific purposes, and then has to be expended in those specific purposes as well, consistent with our policy. We try to expand from those restricted accounts first, when we have the opportunity to do that, and then we have some assigned funds that have been built up. There's an assigned carryover, another, which includes a number of different categories that have kind of been looped in together. Those are funds that have been donated to districts for specific purposes or specific buildings, and they're allowed to carry those over for following years, as well as some of those other things, as far as projected enrollment changes, program initiatives. So we have the sustainability of that seven-period day and things like that. And we're also looking at using some of those funds for some of our curriculum implementation in coming years as well. So with that, kind of, as we're moving forward, this is kind of the same fund balance with the other minor categories as well, and we'll present all of this in more detail when it comes time in June, but to get that initial piece, where we will be anticipating the request to adopt that budget in June of 2018. It has to be done by the end of June, so that we have authorization to do that. And then tonight specifically, there's an agenda item authorizing the advancement of expenditures of up to 30%, based on that preliminary budget. And I would stand open for if there are recommendations for other changes or other questions specifically to that. What we've really tried to do, working with Fiscal Planning Advisory Committee, and Lisa Rudolph, who's one of the chairs of the committee, is here as well, and made it through the marathon of a board meeting tonight, but we've really tried to kind of balance that piece of how do we make sure we are living up to what we told our community we were going to be using the funds for, investing in that class size reduction and some of these other programs to help support our kids most immediately, while at the same time have that sustainability for a period of time, so we have some consistency of a program, and that's really where we've been working to build those priorities as well.
Yeah? Was it, I think this was the FPAK meeting that I sat in on for you, right, Christine?
Could be.
Could be.
We have one sensitive, I think, didn't we? I think Christine came back for the last one, but you had the chance to engage in some of these conversations as well.
I would say not to put any words in Lisa's mouth, but I think you've covered fairly well the spirit of FPAK's recommendations.
I do have a question.
Okay.
And a comment. And I feel, I'm slightly overwhelmed with all of the numbers, because I'm like, trying to listen to you and trying to look at it on the screen for the first time. So the question is, if you can say more about the decrease in budget for community education next year? I was surprised to see that going down fairly notably from this year.
Yep, and I apologize, Jim and Community Ed were working diligently over the weekend trying to get some of these numbers updated, and I think we still are working on finalizing that budget for next year.
Okay.
So, as I said, this is in draft form. We really focused heavy on the general fund specifically, and even that, we have some additional assumptions that we're going to be finalizing. And so all of these things will continue to be a work in progress as well, so.
Which is a great transition to my comment, which is, I'm a little bit anxious and concerned that our next meeting is the one meeting that's currently scheduled for June, where we are going to have the final information and vote on it in the same night, in order to have it approved in time for the state. And I am just personally concerned about my ability to take all of that in and turn that around the same evening. So I don't know if you are going to be able to get the final to us with quite a bit of lead time before that board meeting, so we actually do have more of an opportunity for the back and forth to make sure we feel really good. Okay, great. Thank you.
So one of the things I would ask is, in principle, kind of the guidelines, and this is the process that we typically follow, and this happened every year, we do it at the second meeting in May, final is the one-time in June and stuff like that, you know, are there assumptions? I said earlier, I said that a lot of times it's easier when we're cutting budgets, because we're cutting to a dollar amount, and we're adding into programming and things like that, and have the support while at the same time trying to create that sustainability. So kind of these target numbers, are they in line with what the board would be hoping? Or is there some desire to make some changes on some of these in the meantime, because those are things that we can still make some modifications to, if there's a board's desire to do something different?
I mean, I think it's easy to get sucked into the actual numbers, and like Craig says, these are, there's a lot of assumptions built in here. When this budget is finalized, you know, like you have ever many months from now, those numbers are going to be different. And so what you're really looking at, in my opinion, is, are the priorities reflected in the budget the priorities that we have set as a board? So to me, it's about relative allocation, kind of high level.
I agree, and think, especially given some of the commitments we made to the community in the referendum process, I do think there's a level of detail that I want to make sure I have a good sum of. And so that's the type of information that I will be eager to see more of, and appreciate that that is already in your plans.
And then making sure that, you know, since this is all, we are talking about referendum, that we, again, make sure that we get this out to the public about how we've used that referendum money. I know we've talked about it before, so.
I also, oh, I was just going to say, just a word of appreciation, to see that fund balance number increasing. I know that has been a really big priority for FPAK and for this board, you know, for quite a few years. And so I think, you know, to get to the point where these projections have us above 7%, I think is really remarkable and worth a lot of appreciation, so thank you.
And with that, I'm just going to kind of lead in, because with that sustainability, that's one of the things that we have to monitor, is because it's not, the goal for us to sustain three to four years is not going to be sustainable to keep that at that level, and so that's where we're needing to kind of function at. So I want to kind of create that reality of, we increase that with intent, but then we also know that if we're going to create that sustainability, there will be have to be some measures as, that's part of what that's helping us do, as part of that process, but...
I mean, it's the intentionality of, that we're actually actively preparing for that, and are at the point that we're at, so that we can do that. We could not have done that several years ago, so that broadens, I guess, is what...
We've been working hard to make sure that we're being appropriate and doing what we can, and some of it is good luck, and some of it is just kind of being very thoughtful and strategic about that work, too, so, thank you.
Ma'am Chair, I'm prepared to move that we accept the recommendation and authorize the business office to expend up to 30% of funds prior to final budget approval and adoption. Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we pass the preliminary budget approval for preliminary expenditures. And we will move on to intermediate 287, LTFM budget.
Thank you. And we have two items that are going to look relatively similar. One, and the first is our intermediate 287. So as part of our intermediate 287 participation, we have levy authority and also responsibility to pass the long-term facilities maintenance that intermediate 287 is supporting. They passed it at the board meeting, I believe the expenditures is $912,000, of which Richfield share is $64,925. And so it is a part of their plan. The details of that plan are included in the board packet as well, and we just ask for your authorization here tonight, and Crystal may be able to respond to some questions if there are questions as well, as per the representation on intermediate 287.
I'll say, we discussed and approved the 287 side of this at that last board meeting, and the question that I asked there was, what does this represent in terms of a change from our prior plan with them? And was told that this is pretty steady. This does not represent an increase, is just maintaining the current funding.
So there is a resolution in the packet for the board's approval on this one, as far as the format that they request of us.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will vote the resolution.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Brackey, a second by Mr. Ashmead. This is a resolution, so I will pull the board. Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
Ms. Brackey?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the resolution passes. And we will move on to Richfield Schools LTFM.
Thank you. Dan Kretzinger, working hand-in-hand with IEA, working hand-in-hand with ICS, has tried to build out a projection. Pull out the crystal...
Michael Beckerman, if you'll...
What, I know, isn't it great? Sorry. ICS, I think, is their official name. And IEA, I think, is the official name, Institute for Educational Assessment, I believe it is, have built out a plan, similar to what we've done other years. With long-term facilities maintenance, as we've talked about the levy, there's been some additional funds that the boards have been given authority for, in improving a number of areas. As part of that authority, it is requested that districts are expected, that districts build out a tenure plan that looks at kind of replacement and things like that. One of the things that we did with the facility study, and as far as that larger capital project, built in some components of this, it's kind of the first tier of the facilities maintenance, is what was built into that capital projects levy, so some of the referendum stuff will be included in that. But then we also have tiers two and three that were not funded as part of that, and so one of the things that we were trying to do is start to build up a little reserve within the LTFM funding that we're receiving, for once the capital projects are completed, then we will definitely still have facility needs moving forward. One of the things in us trying to be proactive in this approach is, the state hasn't even formally come out with their spreadsheet. We think it's going to look a lot like this. We believe the data will be very similar as far as how it's being asked to be submitted, but this budget, as far as the current year expenditures in different categories, built out by buildings and things like that, is a component of what we're asking approval for tonight, hoping that we don't have to come back and ask for it, because they're asking for some additional information, but that allows us to kind of keep this project moving forward as well. You can see in the materials that were prepared, five key areas specifically for the LTFM funding, which generates $1.8 million in levy dollars for the FY '19 year, include exterior door replacements at Richfield Middle School. Again, we're not trying to do things that are going to be redundant, but that's one of the projects that's later on the list, and we have some specific needs in some areas there for security, as well as for our maintenance needs in those areas. The partial refurbishment at the high school, which the board has already approved through that bid process, is built into this long-term facilities maintenance. One of the questions earlier this evening was talking about ADA compliance and being able to be accessible, wheelchair lift replacement at our STEM to improve that area, replacement of diving boards and platforms at Richfield Middle School, our swim team in their ingenuity got a loner board, as one of the boards was damaged and needed some replacements, but looking at kind of making sure that those are really up to the standards of that program as well. We're able to coordinate that with the pool cleaning that's taking place in August, with the deep dive cleanings that area, and then re tubing of Boiler Four at Richfield High School. We saw some significant failures in some of the tubing in those areas at the high school this year, and it's not something that we can wait to have done, and so we want to make sure that that is up and running for next winter, when that time comes along, even though we will be doing some significant changes to that space over the next two years. So that's the request for times as well. The other thing you'll notice is, with the bond that we have for the indoor air quality, that also is built into this project for, it's projects over $100,000 per site, and we have three years of projected expenditures in that area. That's coming out of that $32 million bond that was issued for indoor air quality that the board had authority for last fall. And so that also is built into this project for the next 10 years. With that, I would stand for any questions, otherwise it's taking some best guess assumptions on where we're going to be years down, where some of the needed changes are going to be.
So I have a question. When we, so two questions. First off, when we approve this, does this lock us into anything, or could we submit another plan next year that's revised?
So every, you want me to answer that question?
Go ahead.
Okay. Every year, if you notice, this plan comes to you for review, and you have to authorize a new tenure plan next year, and every year we have chances to make those adjustments. So as we discover things that we don't know about, we have the chance either to build that into next year's project, if it's, if we have funding available, or the two-year out, three-year out, we can continue to modify that on an annual basis. Many of these things, what I've noticed, is kind of as we've been proactive working with IEA, we predict when things are going to fail, and so we try to plot in certain funds for the asbestos abatement, for tile replacement and things like that, that are part of these projects, and knowing that, absent this capital projects that we had, we haven't been able to do all of those things at once, and so we have some things that just knowing when things wear out and what the life expectancy is, that's how the plan is built, but we do have that flexibility if things happen that surprise us, and make those changes.
So good. So I mean, my second thing isn't necessarily a question, as much as a sort of an observation, and I think it's probably immaterial, given what you've just told us about our ability to be flexible. But obviously, school safety has been a big, I have a discussion nationally and at the Capitol here in Minnesota, and it is likely that we will see, through one mechanism or another, funding being made available. It might be through LTFM, and so this is potentially something, once the legislative process comes to a final conclusion, we could see if that fits with our plan. Yeah, but given that we have flexibility, and we'll be revisiting this next year, it's probably immaterial today.
Thank you.
So, okay, so I guess, should I go ahead and make a motion?
I think that's...
All right.
Let's do that.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the LTFM resolution.
Now, a second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus, and again, this is a resolution. So I will pull the board, starting with Ms. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Ms. Brackey?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the Richfield Schools LTFM resolution passes. And we will move on to the lead-in water plan.
So this is the plan that you heard about earlier, when IEA was presenting, as far as, and then there's an 80-page document. Part of that is the plan, and then part of that also includes the results from that last testing, so that you can see that information, as I talked about, part of that requirement is having that accessible and available. And so with that, we're just asking for your approval of that lead-in water plan.
Sorry, we got distracted by snacks.
There are cookies.
And I'm really hoping you asked your questions earlier, because...
Don't leave without a cookie.
There are plenty, please.
Awkward.
While the cookies are being distributed, I would just say it was great to hear that we have been proactive and ahead of legislation on this one, and not just the lead-in water, but actually on multiple of the things that they talked about, so that was affirming to hear. Yes.
I always like when news reports come out about this is happening in this district, or this is happening in this district, or we get requests. It's like, you go to IEA, it's like, so did we do this? Oh yeah, we did that, blah blah blah, and it's all set. So it's important to have strong partners like that who are specialists in those areas. We also use them, it's kind of separate from this lead-in water, but if there are ever questions, you know, they are readily available to come out and do testing for us for indoor air quality issues or things like that, and so we call on them as a strong tactical partner as well as strategic partner in our work on health and safety.
One, and I should have really mentioned this when they were here, but one piece, given the iterative nature of that mitigation, I think it would be great if, when we're presented with those results next year and when we put these in publicly reporting, if we are showing, you know, because the sink in room 349A is looking pretty bad right now at 1,280 parts per billion, right? That's 500 times the, you know, the level. So if we can iteratively show that we're mitigating those particular spots, it's more of a reporting thing than anything else.
There's a part in this report that has conclusions and recommendations, and then we also have follow-up reporting as far as what the end result was, but making sure that that's clear and accurate. I know that when we did this last time, it was, yeah, when we looked at this a couple of years ago, there was kind of the, here was the faucet that was out of compliance, here was the recommendation, here was the end result, and here's when that was changed. That, you know, those things take place from anything. If it's a faucet, you know, replacing the faucet, if it's something deeper than that that is more cost prohibitive, if it's not something that's being used, we take it offline and have it labeled and marked as non-drinkable water and things like that. And so there are a variety of different resolutions, but having that clearly articulated so that that's evident and that we are taking the actions. And hopefully, obviously, with our larger facilities project, we have some resources to kind of make longer-term fixes on some of these areas that previously, because of our financial situation, just had to kind of put a Band-Aid on it and make the small cut, but make some larger improvements in those areas. And that's part of those testings that they're doing with the mechanical work is making sure that we don't have pipes that are, or that the pipes that are needing repair, needing significant changes, or that are having issues because of lead in those areas, that those things are dealt with appropriately.
Okay, so if all our questions are answered, we can entertain a motion.
I will move that we approve the district lead-in water plan.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Brackey, a second by Mr. Tensing. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and our lead-in water plan passes. And we will move on to termination and non-renewal probationary contract.
Turn this over to Joel. I'm waiting for your rest here.
Bring it forward again tonight, again, additionally, the second meeting in May, the resolution relating to termination and non-renewal of probationary teaching contracts, so asking for your approval on this resolution this evening, same as last meeting. Again, just wanted to mention for public that these non-renewals of the contract of probationary teaching contracts are not necessarily strictly discipline-related, it can be for a lot of other reasons within the district, can be budget, can be movement within the schools and leaves of absence, things of that nature, so just asking for your approval tonight on the resolution.
I'll move the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brackey. Is there any further discussion? This is a resolution, so I will pull the board. Mr. Paulus.
Aye.
Ms. Brackey.
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead.
Aye.
Mr. Tensing.
Aye.
Ms. Cole.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the 2018-19 school board meeting dates.
All right, so just presenting to the board the calendar for next school year. Just as a reminder, it begins in August, even though there is a meeting in July, that is technically part of this school year, even though from a fiscal year perspective, it is part of the next fiscal year. So you'll note that July 2018's meeting, even though the next fiscal year was on this current year's calendar. And so this loads August through July of 2019. Also talks about, again, staying first and third Monday, except as noted on the several Tuesdays when there's holidays, and then when things are impacted by spring recess or by one meeting to be held in summer. And again, we have set two meetings in August, as we have added that in the past, because we found we need that as we load up the school.
Was that to make the meeting not so long in August, or I don't remember?
Yes, the meetings in August can get quite long. We also, the board has asked for multiple updates during that about projections, about enrollment, and about staffing, just to get us, get us started in the school year on the right foot.
Any questions or concerns? Nope.
I'll move that we approve, accept the, that we approve the scheduled as listed.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the 18-19 school board meeting dates passes. And we will move on to donations.
All right, so the Richfield High School Random Acts of Kindness, I received a generous donation from Jen Kat Smith Kraus, our teacher at the high school, $100 for bus cards or tokens to be used by our students. And then donations to the Richfield High School Spartan Food Shelf, $20 to the Empty Bowls fundraiser, GoFundMe through WePay, donation of $22.72, and the 50th Senate District DFL donated $100 to the Spartan Food Shelf. I'll move that we accept these donations with gratitude. I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we accept these donations with gratitude. So we will move on to advanced planning and legislative updates.
All right, so the legislative session came to a close Sunday at midnight. Now, there's two weeks for the governor to determine what he will pass and what he will not. There are multiple bills impacting schools. There is currently an omnibus tax bill, approximately 990 pages. The governor has indicated that he will be vetoing that, and we have to wait and see what occurs. That bill does have some significantly problematic issues for schools, approximately 15 mandates without funding to go along with them, including a required civics test, some MCA reporting, a ranking of either a 1 to 100 or a star-based system for schools, and another set of mandates that would be implemented in schools, again, without any form of funding to support that. And so, again, the governor has indicated that he would likely be vetoing that. There is some school safety bills that are outside of there, which could provide some funding to our school. And then one of the things that I'm excited and hopeful that the governor will sign is the pension bill, which actually does cover one of our top legislative priorities, which fills the gap in the Teacher Retirement Association pension, and actually, most of the pension system statewide, without directly impacting funding to classrooms. It comes out of a separate base tax bill from the Ways and Means Committee, and so we are hopeful that the governor will sign that. That would be my main update, but I should be able to update in our next board meeting on the things that the governor did sign and those things that may have had impact on our district.
So we will move on to information and questions from the board.
I have one on the, on May 29th, the Spartan Foundation Awards Breakfast, what we held at 7:00 AM at Main Street Village. That's where, you know, the Spartan Foundation, as you may recall, is an organization that supports a number of students, and through the activities, they award enough, I think it's 20 to 25 scholarships to their Richfield High graduates every year. And so, this is their awards breakfast where they give out the awards and, you know, make formal the award to the students who are there with their parents. Anyway, if anyone would like to attend, please tell me.
It's when, May 29th?
May 29th, yeah. They asked me to get a list, there's, you know, it's a busy room, so if you would like to attend, please let me know so I can get your name on the list.
Well, it's not an info update from the board, just as a reminder, and this will transition also to a future agenda item. You had asked for an update on Reimagine Richfield and the work that's happening. It's been scheduled on the 30th of May, right after school, staff and students will be coming together to synthesize the input of the community, the students and the staff, to come up with the, some of the top priorities that were generated from Reimagine Richfield. We'll also be sending an invite out to our community for an event to follow, also on the 30th of May, starting at about 5:00, right after the close of that, where we will be talking about some of those main priorities, sending up Superintendent Advisory Reimagine Richfield Group, which will set up a calendar and also prioritize topics for next year. And so we'll basically be taking the work that we did in Reimagine Richfield, connecting them to superintendent advisory work. And so on the 30th at 5:00, we'll begin that, taking again, the work that has been synthesized by students and staff. And an announcement will be going out in the next couple of days.
Here's that question. I'm sorry, I feel like I've asked this before, and I should know the answer. Where are we at in terms of, our strategic plan is now not four years old, is it? It's just three years old, is that right?
It concludes, yes, it concludes in 2020. We did an update strategic plan-wise mid-year and also summer, and we should be having, as the board had asked for a larger reporting mechanism. We talked about vision cards as a way to report back on how we're doing across the spectrum on our strategic plan goals. I should have an update on that at the next board meeting, as I report back on my goals, as that was one of the things that I'm developing, and we'll begin full reports beginning in the fall.
All right. So I think as we develop those kind of vision cards, dashboards and whatnot, thinking about not only updating on progress on meeting objectives, but also revisiting the plan itself and kind of keeping that plan relevant.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, usually, strategic planning is usually one of a five-year kind of lifecycle. Yeah. So anyway.
So, future meeting dates?
Crystal, I have one more.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm definitely spacey today. I forgot about the Spartan Foundation golf event, which is June 18th. And so if anyone would like to participate in that, make sure that you find your golf partners and submit your entry form. I guess we'll have graduation before the next meeting, won't we?
We will actually have graduation on the night.
Probably nearly the best event.
I'd be late if I went to the next one.
Lots to look forward to.
Yeah. Good thing. So, future meeting dates, June 11, 7:00 PM regular board meeting with public comment, and July 16, 7:00 PM regular board meeting with public comment. So beyond what we've already discussed, are there any other suggested future agenda?
I have just a request for follow-up or update on the survey work that we are going to do to better understand our market share and what we are learning, or just where that stands. And then, the second thing, I'm more assuming that nothing has happened, so we do not need an update, but just want to make sure that the athletic conference discussions that we've been having continue to be on our radar.
So just as a reminder, so the survey is in process now, we're hoping to have results near the end of May, and should be able to have a board presentation on the 11th of June, and if not, a brief update and a full presentation by the 16th of July. And then conference, we are moving ahead, as we discussed, which doesn't look like it would impact next year, but definitely a conference change. We can have a conversation and presentation on that over the summer for a transition for the 19-20 school year. And I will be presenting with the athletic director and the school principal, I believe it is on June 7th, to the, I believe it's the Tri-Metro Conference, to talk about our intention and willingness to join and talk about some of the things that we have going as a district. We'll also hear what is in play with regard to the Tri-Metro Conference, and so we'll begin that relationship in a more formal way with that goal of 19-20. We can update the board after that, too.
And is the, knowing that football is a separate process, is that continuing just to move along the separate track?
It is, however, it does remain on that same timeframe of the 19-20 piece also.
So we have a closed session scheduled this evening, so if someone would like to make a motion in alignment with Minnesota Statute 13D03 to move into closed session.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we will now move into closed session, followed after a short recess.